This special meeting of the Tulare City Council. So comments at a special meeting are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes per item. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you may call 559-366-1849. Please note that there will be approximately a 20 second second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing the meeting. All right, so we're going to be reviewing the fiscal year 2025 budget. So.
I'll start us off.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Welcome. The intent of today's special work session is to walk through the budget again. And you'll see that there's been some changes from the last presentation as we advised you that that was possible and in fact likely. We are intending to walk through what those changes are, answer any questions you may have. There are some specific questions that Mark's going to walk you through that we're hoping to receive answers on. We have an agendaized adoption of the budget this evening in a regular meeting. Should you so be compelled to do so, we are happy to to modify the budget if necessary in order to have it adopted this evening. Assuming that it is something that we can do here, either in a special work session or in tonight's meeting. If we're not able to do that, or if you're unwilling to do that, you need more time, then we would be continuing the budget discussion to a date certain. Our current proposal would be next Tuesday. There are some challenges with that in that I don't believe all the council members can be present, but I believe we would have a quorum so we can talk through that at that time if necessary. We also have on the agenda adoption of the strategic plan. It's not necessarily what we're intending to go through in this work session. This work session is largely intended for council members to talk amongst themselves, to ask questions and to give some form of direction. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mark Roberts, who will walk you through the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Mondell. As as Mr. Mondell said, I am Mark Roberts, Chief Financial Officer for the city of Tulare. And we are here to review the proposed budget for the city. As I always like to do before I begin, I would like to thank staff for their support and assistance in preparing the proposed budget and the information before you, most especially the Assistant Director of Finance sitting to my left, Melanie Gabori, but also the Department of Finance staff who has contributed in different ways. But, you know, just by really doing their daily work to allow me to focus on the budget has been necessary, especially in my first three months, four months doing the budget. That's been extraordinarily important. Also, this was although not as much as it will be in the future due to the time constraints we were under, I want to thank the various department heads. The, I think I was remiss in in not thanking Ms. O'Neil over there because she has been extraordinarily important in helping me with workers comp and general liability and the and the other funds, the other internal service fund. So that's been extraordinarily important. Finally, I also did have the assistance with the city manager's gracious approval of a budget consultant whose whose assistance has been invaluable or we would not be before you as we are tonight. But so again, I just wanted to make sure I thanked all those all those folks. As I did with the preliminary budget, I won't be reciting every number, only the most significant items and totals, and I will be rounding numbers. Also, as before, if you need clarification on something, please don't hesitate to stop me to ask for it, otherwise to allow me to get through the presentation and allow you as much time as possible for questions and debate. Please hold your questions until the end of the presentation. So here you can see, excuse me, the the proposed budget, proposed total city budget, which reflects projected revenues of 170.7 million, transfers in and out of $14.6 million and $145.2 million in expenditures. Transfers in and out, while not revenues and expenditures affect fund balance because they act like revenues and expenditures. Excuse me again. The typically and for that reason, wherever there's a transfer in, there should be a corresponding transfer out. The reason there is a slight difference here is there a is a $38,500 transfer to the successor agency from the general fund, which since we do not report the successor agency in the city's budget does not show as a transfer in. That's why that number is actually lower. The primary reason for the difference, the significant difference in revenues and expenditures are capital projects and capital outlay. Other than for the city's municipal utilities, only a small amount of project related expenses are currently included in the preliminary in the proposed budget. And we're working to analyze, as we're working to analyze the results of fiscal operations of the current and prior year in order to determine the funding and financing sources available for those for projects. As you may recall from the preliminary budget presentation, work remains to be done assessing that those financing sources and project priorities as well as capacity. Might have been a little bit redundant there. And we plan to plan return to you with a recommended list of projects once that assessment and analysis is complete, likely at at the midyear, if not before. With estimated revenues and appropriations, the proposed general fund budget, sorry, the general fund, proposed general fund budget reflects a small deficit for which available general fund fund balance and reserves are sufficient to offset. Therefore, the general funds financing sources exceed its financing uses and the budget is balanced. I don't recall if I had defined what the balanced budget is during the preliminary budget, but it's often considered to be the difference between or revenues which meet or exceed expenditures, but it's actually financing sources, which includes revenues, but also fund balances and financing uses or finance financing uses which are expenditures and transfers out. So provided the former exceeds the latter, you have a balanced budget.
Can we get a clarification? May I? Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. By definition, I have trouble with the idea that our revenues are less than our expenditures, including the transfers by over a quarter million dollars, and yet we have a balanced budget. How is that possible?
Again, whenever, if we did not have sufficient fund balance or reserves to cover that deficit, we would have an illegal budget. But we do have, we know we have several millions of dollars in excess of 20, perhaps even closer to $30 million in general fund balance, general fund fund balance that's available to cover that difference.
So we have reserves. By my analysis, we have a deficit, but we have reserves sufficient to cover that deficit.
Correct, yes, we have a budgetary deficit.
So in my layman knowledge, I don't view that as a balanced budget.
Well, as as a layperson, you are entitled to that.
Okay.
As a finance person, however.
A layperson who has a has a vote on whether to approve this budget.
Correct, yes. And and yes, to the extent that you don't, to the extent that you are opposed to balancing a budget that has a deficit, albeit balanced, you are you are certainly entitled to do that. I would not bring forward to you a budget which was not balanced by the definition, as I said, because technically you cannot adopt a budget like that. That that has a deficit for which fund balance and reserves are insufficient to cover it.
And counsel, if I might add that it is not uncommon in cities, it has not been uncommon, as I understand in the history of this city, to bring forward balance budgets that either have a slight surplus, surplus or slight deficit. In the past, I believe that has been the case. However, it's always council's prerogative. If it feels more comfortable with showing a fiscal year 25 budget that is balanced, meaning that it is either zero or a much slighter deficit or a much or perhaps a slight surplus, absolutely your prerogative and we're prepared to help you do that this evening if that's your desire.
And if I may provide some additional information and any member of the council or the city manager may wave me off, this assistant city manager may nudge me. However, at this point, I should mention that there is what's called a structural deficit. I wasn't going to go into the weeds and this is going to be very brief, I promise. A structural deficit is when your ongoing revenues, your operational revenues are not sufficient to exceed your ongoing expenditures. However, when you have what are called one-time expenditures like capital projects, any capital item is generally considered a one-time expense, even if it's an ongoing capital project. Provided when you remove those capital items, which include which are transfers include, they include transfers for capital purposes. You, that is not a structural deficit. I would not even want to put a structural, even though it would not be illegal, provided sufficient fund balances exists, I would not want to put a structural deficit before you. Again, with our, if you if you just take out the capital and we're going to, we can address that shortly and you'll see some of the capital items. If you take out those capital items, you do not even have a deficit. So it's important to note the difference between a use of fund balance and a deficit.
And while we're on this slide, and I discussed this with Mark this afternoon, can you clarify? You know, the the basics I understand and I, all I had from an accounting standpoint was a a one quarter class at UCLA, but I I felt like I learned a lot from it. We have projected revenues, we've got estimated expenditures, but we have here this vague category transfers in, transfers out. Can you describe exactly what it is we're talking about here?
Yes.
And and where they're coming from and what we're doing? Mark described that to me to a certain degree.
Certainly, as as I said previously, they they act like they act like they act like revenues and expenditures because they affect fund balances like revenues and expenditures to do. They are, they are transferred, there are appropriations or funds, if you want to say it that way, that are transferred from one fund to another to support either operational expenses or capital expenses. There are many cities where, one of my prior cities, for example, where there were operational expenses that were needed, basically a subsidy. We may, we have a couple of those here is where we're, it's an operational subsidy, which means that essentially it's a general fund expenditure, meaning the transfer out. And of course, if it's a transfer out from one fund, it's a transfer into another. So it's a transfer to support expenditures in other funds, thereby effectively making it a transfer. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, I I guess part of it was was there's a big discrepancy between the transfers in and the transfers out. I mean, we're talking basically 58,000 on the transfer in, but the transfer out is approaching $6 million. And why, why do we have? I mean, what, can you explain?
Yeah, well, if I if I can go back within the city as a whole, keep in mind, the city has six 60 plus funds. Each fund is a set about self-balancing set of accounts using the definition of balancing revenues and expenditures. And money can be moved with council's authority from one fund to another. Therefore, since it goes from one fund to another, the the balance of all funds, the transfers in and transfers out must balance. However, within a fund, that is not true. And in this case, the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. Therefore, from a quantity basis, it's just plain more likely that a general fund is going to transfer more money elsewhere and often from from a number of transfers as well as the total. So the general fund generally, it gets all its, it gets all its incoming financing sources from revenues, typically general purpose revenues, meaning it can be used for anything. Transfers don't often come into the general fund unless they're to repay a loan from another fund to another fund from the general fund or from some other purpose. It would be very unusual, at least in my experience, to see transfers in to a general fund exceeding transfers out. And again, this is simply subsidy for operation of other funds, but mostly capital appropriations transfers to support capital capital appropriations in other funds.
So. So fundamentally, if we had a constituent ask us for the fiscal year 2425, based on your projected revenues and you and your estimated expenditures, are we going to have a balanced budget? I think my only answer has to be no. We we have excess, we have excess expenditures to projected revenue.
My.
Aside from the reserve.
My answer would be that while we currently have in in the proposed budget, more expenditures than revenues, we have a piggy bank called fund balance that is sufficient to cover that, just like in your checkbook, if you have to spend a little bit more money this month for rent or mortgage and your various bills than you have coming in in income, provided you have something in your checking account to cover it, you're balanced, you have enough to get through the next month.
Yeah, and I had some capital expenditures I made on my personal residence and I did exactly what you indicated and I got notified that my credit rating went down significantly as a result of spending more money on my credit cards. as a result of spending more money on my credit cards than I normally do. So I understand what you're saying, but there's side effects when you do that type of thing.
Yeah. Well, but fortunately we're not borrowing money to cover our debt. It's one thing to borrow money in the form of bonds to do large capital projects, to build a new city facility, to build a beautiful park across from city hall, a homeless shelter, uh, uh, the, uh, the business incubator, none of which, it's my understanding, we have issued debt for. It would not be unusual in any of those circumstances to issue debt for something so important, particularly something that's going to generate, you know, revenue, whether directly or indirectly in the form of, of the park and the business incubator. Um, however, if, if you were to issue, if the city were to issue debt to cover it, that would be problematic. In fact, there are some cities that issue what's called, what are called pension obligation bonds to cover their pension debt. We are not in that position. In fact, this city, in my experience and my prior cities, is probably on balance the healthiest city with respect to its unfunded pension liability than the others that I've been with.
And walk me through how we went from, uh, and I know those were preliminary figures before, how we went from a, a 456,000 surplus two weeks ago to a $266,000 deficit, which is almost three quarters of a million dollars difference.
Yeah. Well, there are, uh, there are various things, various accounts. As I mentioned in the next steps in the preliminary budget presentation, there are a lot of requirements and adjustments that happen. But the, the one key amount was something that at the time we did not yet have adequate information for. And it's the, the, uh, the payment, the debt service payment associated with the new energy project debt. Fortunately, there is some fund balance in that, uh, in the fund where that is paid from, uh, the financing authorities slash debt service fund, uh, to cover it. But it's a $1.9 million payment, um, most of which is attributable to the general fund or most of which, or most, for most of which the general fund is responsible just based upon the benefits of the energy savings.
And counsel, some of your questions are going to be answered in Mark's presentation. I think we're only on slide two, so some of those were going to be covered as we move forward.
Yes, but that's where, that's.
He's doing a good job.
But that's the most significant difference. Uh, in fact, um, I, not to get ahead of things, but because there's still some uncertainty about what's due, lot going on, lot of moving parts to this budget, new guy, you know, invoking the new guy defense. It's possible there may be another $200,000 to $300,000 needed and we'll come back to the, to you from, at mid-year for that, if we do in fact need that additional money. But I wanted to be a little conservative and not just throw extra money at something without a little more certainty. But I felt like this was the minimum amount that was needed, but it could be slightly more.
Needed, are you talking about the, the deficit being 200,000?
No, for the debt, for the debt service payment that's needed. And a slightly additional transfer may be needed to cover that when, when the time comes.
So instead of four, six, 266, we're looking at four, 66?
It's, it's possible. It's uncertain, but it's possible.
So Mark, real quick question. So, uh, in regards to the transfer in, transfer out, would it be fair to say that the airport is one of those perfect examples where more money goes out than what comes in for the airport?
I believe that's the case because I do believe, uh, even though the analysis is still preliminary, I believe that's one of those funds that has a, a projected negative, maybe even beginning, ending fund balance. Yes.
And so for example, just to take that one, that's why we're going to be bringing forward plans to try to develop the airport so that it ultimately could become as close to self-sufficient as we can. We're not there yet. We're not ready to do that as part of this budget. But there's a lot of grant funds the city's not availing itself of the opportunity to receive because we haven't done other things precedent to be able to receive those grant funds. If we develop the 26 acres of non-aviation space, that'll generate a revenue stream that can help fund, because that has to go to the airport, that'll help fund airport operations. Another example of what you're referring to could be, for example, development services, right? Development services, uh, sometimes functions like an enterprise fund, sometimes it doesn't. Kind of depends on the nature of what's occurring in the economy. So general service, the development services ultimately, not just ours, every development services department, pretty much in the country from time to times is, is subsidized by the general fund.
Correct. And, and on that, on that fund, on the subject of that fund, I have reached out to the auditors and the auditors are likely to recommend that that fund be absorbed into the general fund because it's so largely subsidized by the general fund. And it is not uncommon for development services, tho- those functions to be included in the general fund. And so yes, the airport would be, would be a, a, a good example of, uh, of the, uh, of, of such a, such a fund.
Okay. Can we go on now with your report?
Okay. So here we have the most significant changes from the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget to the current year's, uh, proposed budget. Excuse me again. Okay. Um, as you can see, wage increases accounted for approximately 1.6 million dollars of the change. Um, other personnel changes, uh, added, uh, added about 2.1 million dollars. More than 1 million of that, or not one, more than 1 million, uh, close to 1 million. The numbers will, you'll see some numbers later, but those are, uh, there are several fire department, firefighter positions that are included in the general fund for which there are, are anticipated to be grant revenues to offset. Uh, of course, if, if for those positions, if the grant funds are not received, nor, uh, nor will the firefighter positions. Uh, but if I worded that, uh, worded that correctly, uh, so that would, that would come out. There are, uh, four other positions. I'll get to the position detail, but you'll, so you'll see that in a while. I don't need to go into the detail now. Uh, in the contingent spending account, we have, uh, currently have $500,000 set aside for the Inyo Corridor project, uh, Inyo, Inyo Corridor rehabilitation, uh, as well as a contingency, uh, a contingency appropriation of about $300,000, which allows the flexibility to move money within the general fund as, as, as needed during the fiscal year without having the, the delay of coming to council. Of course, it would be expected that anytime those funds are used for something significant, council would be informed of that. Our liability insurance, uh, basically prebiens, just the cost of premiums, uh, it's going up. Uh, the next two expenditures are grant related to get those firefighter positions. There are certain, uh, there are certain matches. Uh, we have matching funds and city funds, uh, but those are in the, those are funds that are in the general fund. And clothing uniforms for those, uh, additional firefighters, 12, if I didn't mention that, is also included and necessary to receive the grant funds or at least to, to make sure that the guy, the, 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 the men and women of our, of our firefighting force have what they need to safely do their, do their work. And then last, I mentioned the, uh, the transfers out for debts, the debt service, um, energy savings debt. You may, you may have noticed that I did not put any information in there regarding all change, all funds changes. I guess I didn't need to quote there, but for all funds, mainly because the general fund is the primary driver of the changes citywide. The other ones are capital projects, um, and, uh, capital outlay. And again, we'll have some more discussion about that shortly. Uh, okay. I'm sorry. So, uh, measure I, uh, fiscal year 2020, uh, fiscal year 25 expenditures of measure I funds are currently anticipated to exceed, exceed its revenue by $546,000. Analysis of the balance of measure I revenues and expenditures is, uh, is in progress, but currently fund balance attributable to measure I is believed to be sufficient to offset the difference, um, uh, the difference in the two. Expenditures accrue to general fund, um, reserves and, and fund balance. So again, we're still, there is 18 years of history that we have to go to. In fact, literally as we speak, staff is doing that, is doing that analysis to ensure that we are, that we're good with that, that fund balance. But preliminarily, we believe, uh, we believe we are okay. As a clarification or correction, uh, to, uh, comments, questions and comments during the preliminary budget presentation, the $200,000 that council was seeking in appropriations, ironically enough, was actually it for streets, is actually in the transfers. So that money was actually in the budget. We were looking at code enforcement, uh, at the time, but it's in the budget and that has been increased at, I believe, uh, shall we say council consensus at least, uh, to $250,000. Uh, these are the general fund expenditures by department. As with the preliminary budget presentation, I'll simply allow you to absorb the information. Uh, there's a good bit of, good bit of it, obviously. Preliminary, uh, salaries and benefits appropriations in the general fund, total 39.6 million dollars. Non-personnel appropriations are 17.3 million dollars, making total preliminary budget as seen before, as seen previously, 56.9 million dollars. Here you can see the history, um, and fiscal year 25 projection for the cannabis or.
Mark, I'm sorry. I think there was a question.
Patrick, turn on your mic.
I know I want to get you through, but sometimes since you're on the screen, the question's pertinent to the screen. If we can go back one slide, please.
I, I don't know. Can I? There we go.
There we go. So, um, under general fund expenditures by department, we have parks and we have recreation and community services. Is, uh, generally, not saying this is right, but the reference a lot of times of our, of our encampment and our homeless shelter are considered under parks. Does this take into consideration or does this include the potential additional administrative cost of funds? Is that worked in to this?
For the administrative, one more time.
Homeless shelter.
So increases towards staffing contract components or how is that handled? It, we're going to have additional cost for operations related to either, I would imagine, the encampment or the homeless shelter. Is, is that here or is that not in?
It would, it would be included in these, in these, in the, in the appropriations. There may be some, I think it's, there may be some of the encampment resolution fund. I, I think it's a little bit of both. Mr. Klick could speak more to where, where he requested the funds be appropriated. I suspect though, that given where we are, or more specifically where we aren't with the development of the, of the homeless shelter, that a, a, an, an increase in those operational expenditures is not yet being seen in the numbers.
That, that is correct. Jason, we'll come back to you in a second. So because we're currently negotiating with the operator, we have to develop a budget with the operator. We have identified that we believe about $2 million a year hopefully will be adequate. We have identified the sources we would intend to use. We would bring that back to council for its ultimate, ultimate, uh, decision when we bring for the operator agreement. Hopefully that'll be in the next few months. I will just tell you right now, the sources that we are recommending at that time will be measure Y, CDBG, and we have another of grant funding source. I don't remember what it's called right now, but we'll bring all that back to you at that time. So it's, it's in the budget in the sense that we have fund balances, but we haven't pulled those out specifically yet for the homeless shelter because we need to present that to you and you guys have to make a decision on that.
That's correct, Mark.
It, on the long, those lines, Mark, one thing that I noticed in the comparables between this fiscal year and previous fiscal year that, uh, Vice Mayor issue would talk a little bit about is, I, I noticed there was a $9 million, uh, salary and benefits increase. So that to me was significant. So I just wanted to see if I was accurate in, in the information you provided in the last meeting. And then, uh, so the total for the salary and benefits had increased by nine. I'm hearing that there's maybe a couple million, two and a half, maybe three million that are for the homeless effort. But I'm trying to understand, was there just, we just hired a lot more stuff, folks? I know we've been doing some contracts, but to me it stood out. We spent 30 million last year and this year we're spending almost 40 million.
Well, actually, city, citywide, in the gen, in the general fund, it's actually 3.7 million dollars. Um, and, uh, the, I, I mentioned a little while ago, or a short time ago, the additional positions that are requested, you're going to see those toward the end. The, uh, there, the firefighter positions are, I think they account for, I want to say seven or 800,000 dollars. Please don't quote me on that. I didn't, I didn't actually do them out, but there are, we have a, a handful of positions that are being added. We had, we had increases, uh, that totaled about, uh, I believe about, in, in negotiated increases that totaled approximately, uh, I think nearly $2 million overall. Uh, we had the, the fire negotiated increases and then the recently, the recently offered increases. Uh, so in the general fund, it's actually 3.7 million dollars. Uh, and, uh, and they're basically accounted for with those increases and the additional positions.
All of those increases were previously approved by council through the negotiated agreements with the police department and the fire department. There's also some increases related to minimum wage increases that are dictated by the state. So those are all related to those. Plus we have some new positions that we've requested.
Okay, Mark.
And I'm going to come back and I'll be, I'll be talking about the, uh, about the, that information, uh, shortly. Oh, wait, it might, oh yeah, I did it here. Nope, I'm sorry. Bear with me one second. I thought I may have had it here. Sorry. Looking for my slide. Actually, I lost my place. Sorry about that. Okay. Don't have the information in here. I guess not. Okay. All right. My apologies. Okay. So back to measure Y. Okay. So, and again, we will, we will talk about personnel shortly. So, uh, oops, measure Y. Okay. So, uh, again, here we have the history and fiscal year 25 projection for the cannabis or dispensary or measure Y revenues. Uh, staff recommends maintaining or limiting the authorization of three dispensaries and a taxation rate of 5% on those dispensaries. Uh, during last council meeting, or perhaps it was after, it was requested that we show the current year's, uh, budget and actual expenditures. Uh, to my knowledge, there have been no new expenditures, but this is, these were the amounts that were accurate as of June 4th. Oh, sorry. Okay. So in the current budget, uh, the travel expenses, uh, per council member and community improvement appropriation per council member has been increased from $2,500 to, uh, each to $5,000 each. I believe it's been some time since either of those have been increased. And, uh, we, we also added a, uh, $125,000 or an assumption for, at, of $25,000 apiece for each council, uh, per, per council member.
Can you, can you go back a couple of screens to that other one? It went too fast before I could just.
This one?
Yeah, that one. Okay. So community improvement, nobody used any money. Okay. Good. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. That was it. Okay. Sorry about that.
So we could go back to the last slide. So counsel, uh, these were not requests by council. These were suggestions by the city manager. We are certainly open to changing, eliminating whatever council's desire is. The reason why we had a recommended or recommending consideration of 125,000 community programs contribution or a fund that council has access to is because you recall at the last meeting, Councilmember Sagala brought forth approximately a dozen or so ideas that he was seeking council support for funding. And my recommendation was rather than make a decision at that meeting or this meeting on each one, it may be better for us to consider adding them to the strategic plan so that staff has a chance to review each one and come back. For example, there may be a way to accomplish some of the things Councilmember Sagala would like to do, but not exactly in the way he's recommending. You recall at the last meeting, we had a citizen come forward and ask that the Medford Hanger be painted. Well, we're very fortunate, but staff has worked with a local business who's agreed to donate all the paint and staff would use its own labor to do the work. That's an example of a way that we may be able to get something done, but maybe do it in a way that's more cost effective. And so that was I, my recommendation. The challenge with that though is twofold. One is I don't know if other council members have other things that they want to add to the budget. And two, even if we add them to the budget and, or the strategic plan, I'm sorry, but we don't have any fund approved in the budget. If later we come back and we say, hey, this is a great idea, but we're going to need X dollars to do it. There's no funds to do that. And so this, my thought was if we allocated 125,000, that may be a way to get some of council's projects done. And these were some of the parameters we had suggested. We are certainly open to changing this, removing this, whatever council's desire, but I wanted you to understand where that came from.
Okay. And, uh, oops, sorry. Before I continue, Councilmember Sagala, I want to apologize. I knew I had a note on the numbers you were looking for. It just so happened to be on a slide, not in a note. It was on that significant changes slide, 1.6 million dollars in the general fund was for wage increases and 2.1 was, was for those personnel changes, which basically makes up the, the difference in the general fund. But it wasn't that much. Uh, it was actually three, I think it was 3.7 million dollars. All right. Oops. Get back to where I was. Okay. So, uh, so the next couple of slides and, uh, and some later CIP slides will reflect the information provided to the board of utilities or which will be provided to the board of utilities, uh, at the, at the scheduled, regularly scheduled, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, June 20th. Uh, so again, a lot to absorb here. I'm just going to hit the bottom lines all the way to the right. Uh, for the water, uh, utility fund, the proposed budget is 12.8 million dollars. The proposed budget for solid waste and street sweeping is 12, is 13 million dollars. And for the sewer or wastewater budget, the proposed budget is 26.8 million dollars. This does not include transfers, but. there you have them. So with with the with the water fund, there is a don't panic about the $8.4 million. I'm going to get to that in a second. A negative of a deficit of $8.4 million, a small deficit in the solid waste fund of $581,000 and or a smaller and a surplus in the sewer and wastewater fund. The transfers out are to fund projects. A few years ago, it's my understanding, it hasn't always been the case, but capital projects funds were created to correspond to the operating funds, which is really the ideal way to do it. More often than not, you'll see one or two funds, capital projects funds, but in this case, we have one for each, which is also fine. But it looks like on preliminary analysis that the money that was needed to be transferred in the current year and perhaps before was not white was not transferred. And revenues that go directly to the fund was not quite sufficient. There does appear to be sufficient information. I have prioritized this analysis. And we do believe that there are the fund balance, at least with our current current estimates, that there is sufficient fund balance in the water fund. So of that $5.8 million, I believe about 2.8 in the in the transfers, that is. 2.8 million is a makeup transfer, if you will, and the remaining is is other projects. And again, it's really just a matter of balancing the water fund and the water CIP fund. The the solid waste and street sweeping fund also has sufficient balance to cover its its deficit. Those those second two funds are rather healthy. The water fund does is going to need some analysis and some additional work to make sure it stays. I don't I hate to use the word solid, but to make sure that we stay above, I hate to use the expression above water, but but we will need. We will need to do some additional analysis on that. No pun intended. I I mean it. Okay, so now we come to recommended personnel and fleet changes. And of course, I'm sure you know this, and I think I did mention that the the this will be brought to the municipal utilities budgets will be taken to the board. So obviously, these are more that's more informational information or information. So recommended personnel changes. Various positions are being are being requested to allow city to continue to offer and and improve the the services it offers. Again, I won't go through all the details, but I believe the city manager in the past has referenced a personnel to assist in the budget process, a position to assist in the budget process. As I mentioned, staff has been staff's assistance has been invaluable, as has our budget consultant. But we believe if we have a a budget budget position in these with the city, we will be able to have a even better budget a budget process going forward, a collaborative process, one that's more even more informative, better monitoring of the budget, working with departments, providing training to those departments to be able to monitor their own budgets as well as the oversight of of those budgets. There's three police officer positions, one, two of which are funded by the general fund as a match to the third cost of the third position. The you'll see the the funding of that one elsewhere. The firefighter positions for which grant funding is anticipated, so that's a complete offset there. A couple of there is a one position in the senior civil in the development services fund. You'll see a percentage, by the way, to the right. So when you see one, that's just a number of positions overall. So you'll see senior level finance because of how the cost of that is allocated. You're you're going to see it five or six times, but the total is 100% for one position. So just to clarify that. Okay, and you can see the cost here by fund.
Yep. Before we before we go any further, just counsel again, I don't remember if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just so you have a sense. One of my jobs is to continue to evaluate not only pay and benefits for employees, but do we have the right number of employees in the right positions? And my evaluation of the organization overall is that we're we're fairly lean, that there are some areas that we need to bolster some positions. We've done a good job, I think, in the last couple of years with our our negotiations and our salary surveys. But we have a lot of overtime in some areas and we have some areas in which we're not getting all the work finished. For example, the three police officers would allow us to have one additional rotation on a full shift, right? So we have eight officers, which would be really important for us. I want you to know that when we look at positions, we look very carefully at them. This year, we received a request for 40 positions. And we're recommending those seven positions, those seven, six positions and a change. I want you to know we compare ourselves to other jurisdictions. We look at them from a number of perspectives. I'll just share with you, for example, if we were to compare ourselves to Visalia. Visalia has a population of about 143,000. They have 845 full time positions, so they're about double our size in population. We have about 381 positions currently. If we just assume for a minute that Visalia was staffed at the right levels, I'm not saying they are, but let's assume that they are. That would mean we should have about 414 positions. And so we would be short 32 some odd positions currently. I'm not advocating that we need to raise or get to that number. I am advocating that we add some more positions in critical areas, which is what you see before you. Thank you.
Thank you. And so there's a there's a water department cross connection specialist being requested. And you can see the other allocation of these finance position. A facilities maintenance technician is being requested for the property management fund. The other, the cost of the of the single grant funded position is it is in its own fund. And the portion of the senior civil engineer costs that's proposed is is included in the CIP administration fund. And there is a reclassification or reorganization in the water fund to reclassify the water control specialist to the water treatment supervisor. Obviously, again, the the utility related items will be going to the municipal utilities, but public board of public utilities. There's okay. Okay, so recommend the fleet purchases. This staff is staff is requesting 19 19 vehicles. You can see the detail here and I won't read. You can see there is there's a shared vehicle with information technology and development services, which you'll see in the next slide. Three vehicles requested for the Office of Safety Code and Facilities. Seven, nine police vehicles, including two motorcycles. Two, two vehicles for community services. The total general fund fleet purchases or general fund fleet purchase request totals $689,000. The senior services center, senior center is requesting a SUV, a small SUV. Development Services is requesting two two sedans. I mentioned one is shared with information technology. Water is requesting a light duty truck and solid waste is requesting a siloed or refuse truck. The total appropriation required for to fund all requests would be approximately 1.2 million. This is mostly the same information I provided at the preliminary budget, although there were a couple of items where the total project or at least the cost. I I don't recall if it was the total cost or not, but there was a larger cost that was more than one year's cost for a couple of projects. I believe one, I believe, was the water storage tank and booster station. Does that sound right, Mr. Miller? That would have been a higher overall. And the other, I think, that the other was it might have been the it might have been the new well. Both those had higher amounts previously. I have a note here that on that last item where the new well is diff funded. We believe that's going to be entirely diff funded, but as I would be informing the Board of Public Utilities, because of the short period of time to put this together, as much as I could, I reached out to staff to get answers. I didn't always have that opportunity. So to be conservative, I put this, I put that appropriation in the water fund, but it likely will not be necessary in the water fund, which will also reduce that deficit that we saw a little while ago. In the sewer and wastewater fund, there are the projects are approximately 800 $810,000. Okay. And here's where the rubber meets the road, decision items. Okay, most if not all of which we have already covered, at least till the end. So the cannabis dispensary or measure Y tax, as we mentioned earlier, the current rate is 5% and three businesses are authorized to operate within the city. Staff recommends maintaining those levels. Staff is recommending adding adding seven adding seven positions. There were a lot of things listed in that position, but remember there were portions of of positions. And when you take the the positions and you net out the ones that are grant funded, you get to the number that the city manager mentioned earlier, which I believe is six or seven. I think it's six. Staff recommends the purchase of 19 vehicles. They're currently in the in the contingency account and the contingent spending account or the contingency account appropriation, I'm sorry, includes $500,000 for the annual quarter rehabilitation. Staff is requesting direction to or that the council can decide to maintain that level, reduce it to reduce it by half or or approve some other amount. The, as we also discussed earlier, the community, there was a community community programs or contributions appropriation for $125,000 to be spent at council's discretion with those caveats that the city manager mentioned. We did discover that the softball and baseball utility, shall we say, subsidy was not is not included in the budget. So we we would also ask for your direction to include that if you wanted to do so. And for those items that are not in for those last four items, if you choose to change and or add any of those and and those are the only things possibly preventing you from adopting the budget later this evening, you can simply amend the resolution to include any such changes and you can adopt the budget tonight again, if at council's discretion. Next steps. So as I mentioned, at June 12, on June 20, we will be presenting the budget. The Board of Public Utilities would be presenting the municipal utilities budget for 2025 to the Board of Public Utilities for adoption. It's a mouthful. We will. We will be bringing forward an amendment for the general fund reserve policy. Recall, it's currently 25% and we will likely be recommending a range of 16 or 17% to 33%, which basically equate to two to four months of and general fund operating expenditures with the bottom left with the lower end of that range being the minimum general government finance officers association or GFOA recommendation as a minimum. We will be bringing forward a recommendation for the workers' compensation fund balance, workers' compensation fund surplus, the same for the employee welfare fund. We will be performing the CIP analysis I referenced. And we will be forming the fund structure analysis for CIP and grant fund, which I mentioned at the preliminary budget, where we would potentially consolidate, possibly add a few, but consolidate several parts into the into one. And then I mentioned that. With that, that concludes the presentation. I would. Well, that's it. Questions, entertaining questions from council.
Thank you very much for that report. I just want to let council know that we will end this at five minutes to seven in order to allow our our citizens to attend our next meeting on time. So I'll entertain any questions at this time, but just remember to try to keep them within that timeframe.
So
I was going to just let anybody make a comment. Would you like me to direct each person? Okay, we'll start with Steve Harrell.
Madam Mayor, I appreciate the presentation, but I already had my questions asked and answered.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
So much to jump into. We should have a minute of calisthetics real quick as we go through this. Um, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for walking through the details. Did present questions to staff. Appreciate meeting with Mark and with Josh. There's a there's a few things in front of us, and I don't know exactly of the maybe the right timing or right order. I think one overall is I the issue I think around, as we had said, is the presentation of the $200,000 deficit. I I you know, absorb Councilman Maderos's concern for that of what we I think really want to look for in a balanced budget. I also CFO Mark absolutely appreciate what you're saying. So and absorb your information that the process for what we're doing is doesn't mean we're passing a deficit budget and how we look at that. I I my absorb to I think the concern a lot of times in the way that council has to take this message of our actions and we presented the community. Are we deficit spending or what are you doing with capital projects and costs? So I'm just kind of sharing that I appreciate both viewpoints and I appreciate what you're sharing technically and and just kind of absorbing all of that of what we want to do. To jump into the budget, and I know you're going one by one, is there was some items. And I think first that we're there's the budget itself, and then there was some items presented by Councilmember Sagala. And perhaps I'll just jump to my variant thoughts that I have. One is what I'm understanding in the budget and what was presented and what our our chief financial officer walked through. With capital projects, I think what we're looking with fleet, what area fleet replacement and some others you touched on is doesn't mean all those expenditures are happening right now. It doesn't mean, or at least if I'm correct, and I looked to the CFO and to Mark, we're not going out. And I say we, the city's not going out and writing a check immediately for all those actions. And so in CIP of what we're dedicating, what grabs me a little bit that I think there's some direction that could be given or a mutual workout with that is it doesn't grab me to absolutely cut somewhere, but can we look at some items that I think could be more placed into a timing issue? What would be maybe first half of the fiscal year? Can we come back to a budget review that we do? And there's some actions to the second part of the year. $200,000 in the grand scheme of stuff where we can, we could go through some items and 59 million bucks isn't isn't that difficult. But when your department's the one that's either going to lose the vehicle or lose the position, it matters a lot to that department and respect that. So with that is in looking at how we, if there's input to timing, is it seems to me that $200,000 can be dealt, worked through with either fleet replacement timing. The $500,000 annual corridor, which if I understood was in contingent items. So there's not an actual expenditure in front of us that that item alone has encompasses more in contingent funds to the whole $200,000 conversation. But again, timing is is what I I'm looking at. Another one, which I think in the discussion I have reservations about, but I appreciate this is these are council discussions, and I know some of the items I'm looking to our CFO and staff. And the reason why I'm looking that way compared internally is is I think some of them are timing issues. So it's not telling or saying, oh, by the way, you got to absolutely cut this line item today because perhaps that expenditure won't happen. And is there something that we can all have an understanding of that? If it comes down to, you know, some discussions on cuts, I don't necessarily know cuts are right, but the corridor timing, the community programs I have a reservation about. And I know that that discussion is amongst council and staff is looking to us on that. And the reason why council members, I I have reservations, I'm just saying I have reservations and talking out loud, is 25,000 a piece, you know, might seem nice on the surface and there's dynamics that we could do. But I'm also cautious that it sets a precedent. And I think it sets a precedent potent that we're at 125,000 today. And then if we're five years down the road, it's 500,000, it's 750. And it creates a little bit of a wedge in between a me and us and then needs of the city. And I see that escalating over the years. And there's things that Councilman initial would would like to do. I know there's community needs. And we I I just have reservations about that and how we approach that. It hasn't 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 been done in the past, but to that magnitude. And I think to go in that process a bit open ended to it is what I have challenged. I appreciate what Mark is presenting because we kind of created that atmosphere a bit with it, but I'm cautious about it. What I understand is council has taken 50,000 and and Councilman Sagala, I respect this one's on your list, too. The council did take 50,000 and set it aside. And we had that discussion. We made that action. And as far as me, I I don't necessarily know if that's up for additional debate or if we keep or cut that. But I endorse that. And I still today think that we keep the 50,000 there as we did before. And when there's a need or that gets settled or solidified, be it arts or something, then we can come back to that. But I would But I would rather keep that 50,000, let's not cut that. But I have reservations about going to $125,000 program for what I, for what I outlined. But of course, look forward to council members discussion on it. A couple of other items in there that I, that I do endorse. And I think there's reasons behind it. And Sagala, this was on your list. It was the increase to the softball and baseball utilities. Mark, our CFO, as I, as I heard you say, actually, the 15,000 isn't in the budget that we had presented to us. So that needs to be a council decision. If I'm, if I'm absorbing that right, is council needs to decide if we keep what we, what we've done, the 15,000, because that's not in the budget. I do endorse keeping that and I do endorse increasing that to 15,750. I'm all around. And the reason I endorse that is because the inflationary cost towards our, our private part, private and public relationship with some of our recreation groups. Utility rate, you tax, electricity is going up at a much higher rate than that. The costs are difficult and we want to maintain sustainability with the private public relationship. Because Tulare doesn't have to fund all of baseball. We don't have to fund all of softball. And I, I, I just think that's a good position for us to take. We're supporting both groups and it helps with those, with those costs. So if we can adjust, I think the $200,000 issue, because I do endorse that. I think it's a good reflection that we come out to the public that we had a zero, you know, break even line. And if we can do that through some timing, you know, fleets, uh, some timing with the corridor rehab. Adjustment, you know, to the community program. And then the other, other part that I say we keep is I would like the baseball and softball one. And let me see if there's another one that that I endorse. And the other part, I think with that in timing, as I said, is maintaining the fire and the police needs from day one. So police department has needs, our fire department has needs. And that is not some of the items that I had mentioned specifically, but we surely want to do that. I do endorse the, the additional positions as our city manager presented. That fits into a lot of the need areas for which we have council have given staff and our community needs. So in closing, and I like this method of one time in closing. Timing on cuts that I touched on and the few things I endorsed, I don't think I missed any other point. And that's where I'm at, Mayor.
Councilman Maderos.
This was a lot easier when I thought we had a surplus of $456,000. Now all of a sudden, we're, not all of a sudden, on further analysis is a better way to put it. We're 266,000 under. I, I understand your comments. Well, I'll, yeah, I understand the comment says it relates to softball and baseball. But I, I always wonder when we advance those costs because we're, we're not paying the money to them. We're just, if I have that correct, Jason, we're giving them credit on what we're dealing with. But, you know, what about soccer? What about Sharks? What about every other organization? I know in, in them, in the ARPA funds that I had, there were a lot of different youth organizations within the community that, that we allocated funds for. And yet in our budget, the only two we seem to be specifically assisting with are baseball and softball. And I've always wondered, what about, what about the rest? And why are we just, what about the basketball program, the youth basketball program that, what are we doing? That's not in our budget. But in any event, I, I'm not going to quibble over that considering the fact that we're talking about the size of the budget that we have. I do, I, I was much more open minded, Mr. Sagala, with your list when we had 456,000 of surplus. And I had calculated basically initially about a minimum of $350,000 in expenditures on your list alone. So now with the $266,000 deficit and you add the 350, we're now over a half a million to $600,000 of a deficit. I think from the standpoint of as a councilman, I, I know when we ran the first time and we had the community forum and and we had, one of the questions that were asked, and I mentioned this to Mark, was what's your attitude and how did you feel about the budget for the city of Tulare? And my attitude at that time was, well, the budgetary needs for the city of Tulare should basically be, be somewhat simple. You have certain amount of revenues and you have a certain amount of expenditures and they should balance, bottom line. We do have our, our surplus revenues and our reserves that can take care of the unexpected under the circumstances. But we have a big enough budget that I think we should find a way to present to the community that we balanced it. That overall, this $266,000, there should be an analysis by, by staff and every department to slightly tighten everybody's budget and find a way to come up with a balanced budget. And that's what I'd ask staff to do. Under this, and, and as much as there are ideas that we have to spend other monies for worthwhile projects, and I'm not questioning them. I think our overall obligation to the community at large and the constituents that we represent is, you know, we're, we're on a path of some ambitious capital improvement projects. But as the everyday expenditures are handled, we need to find a way to do everything we can to balance that budget. So that, that's kind of my direction.
Thank you. Councilman Sagala.
Thank you. A couple of things, questions from the presentation, and then I'll talk a few minutes about the list that I kind of presented. First of all, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. On measure I, I mean, I, I've, I've brought this up almost every single budget year, the last seven, eight years that I've been on council. Is in terms of what, what, I know that this money goes into the general fund. It's called measure I, but yet it's general fund, goes into a big general fund pocket, I mean bucket. But staff does their best to keep it separate in terms of accounting, right? In terms of what comes in, what under measure I. I know in the past, we've talked about a cap, about capping expenditures of measure I until revenue catches up. And so what I, what I saw in today's slide was that we haven't done that. We are spending more on measure I than we're bringing in. However, there is what you call the balance fund and or I would refer as to reserves of measure I that haven't been spent over the years, at least from what I saw in the budgets that you have given us this year. That, you know, there were years where we didn't get to the revenue. So it kind of went into reserve, balance, balance fund, whatever you want to call it. So that's helping us stay afloat, not only with measure I, but in general with the budget. Is that kind of accurate to say?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I think one of the things that maybe not tonight, but I definitely would like for the council to revisit that issue. Do we want to, you know, put a cap on measure on? And figure out until we catch up with revenue. If we're spending nine million, $10 million on measure I and we're only bringing eight and a half million in, is that, is that adequate? You know, or we're bringing in nine. So I think that's a question every budget cycle I've asked, you know? And I think, well, one, I think when I was a mayor, I think we had a consensus that we would try to, you know, cap what we spend instead of the revenue coming in. So that was, that was one question. In terms of the the contingency fund, I, I think what, and I appreciate Vice Mayor bringing up the annual corridor. I know that was something that we had discussions about when we were investing the 22 point, 22 million plus money in downtown from ARPA and other sources that was for Zoom Wall, that was for the business incubator, that was for the downtown, you know, grants to help businesses open up and so forth. That there was a discussion about trying to do something on the west side and the annual corridor idea came up. And I think, you know, Mike, and Mike and I have talked about this, there's a, a master plan that was probably done 20 years ago now. You know, of the annual corridor that we want to do some investment. My only concern with the, the idea that the vice mayor brought up was to kind of the perception that we're going to continue to push things, projects that are non downtown, that are not east side, further, further out. I mean, I agree, you know, it's $500,000. There's really nothing at this point than some crazy ideas of what to do with it. And for mostly my ideas of what to do with that money. But there's nothing concrete. I know that the city manager has talked that, hey, down the road, down the road, down the road. When we don't have all these things on our plate, we'll have all these other things on our plate, we'll get to that. And I'm sure we will, because there's a lot of things that we've gone to. But I just want to have the perception that, that, oh, hey, we're going to, once again, push that money out or we're going to use it to balance our budget or whatever. I just, I just think we just got to be careful on that perception. I, I agree. If we don't have the money, we're not going to spend it in the next two, three months. Maybe we spend it in the last two, three months of the budget. I don't know. That's something that we'll have to work out. And in terms of the cannabis, what I, what I prefer on, on the recommendations, Mark, that you had in your slide about the 5% tax and about what was it? Yeah, the 5% tax and keep it at three. I, I just like to recommend to the council, again, that was a discussion we brought up in the past that at some point we were going to have a dedicate some council time to figuring out what measure Y was going to be for. We've never done that. This is, this is the closest we've come to deciding where that money should go with those two bullet points up there. So I would like to recommend that we agendaize this for a, a, a more thorough discussion. As one of the things that I recommended was to use some of that measure Y funding to help with youth programs. As Mr. Madera is just outlining, hey, why aren't we helping soccer? Why aren't we helping football? Well, measure Y is, is, is a measure that a lot of folks supported. And I think I go back to Mr. Maderos's comments a couple of council meetings ago that there are only 400 homeless folks that are definitely going to benefit from measure Y. But at the last census, there was 18,000 kids, 18 years and under in the city of Tulare that are not getting a single penny from measure Y. So I think that's one of the things that I wanted us to be able to have a conversation about separate and dedicated to that at a future council meeting. And in regards to the softball, baseball utilities, I'm not sure why that guy zeroed out from the get go. It's been a, a payment or credit that we've had in that for years. I do remember it was one single line item and a couple
Overset. I think it was just overset.
Well, I hope so. And so the thing is that, that, so it was all one big payment. And a couple of council, well, a couple of years ago, I don't know if you guys were on the council, but we made it, we wanted to make it fair and we split it right down the middle. Because it was one entity was getting more than the other. So we split it right down the middle. So boys and girls get equal support. And so I definitely support putting it back in the budget and I'm sure why it got out. And then obviously in, in increasing that 5% just to the cost of living increase. And so those were some of the, the comments that I wanted to make in regards to the presentation. And so, Madam Mayor and Council, I'm not sure how you would like to approach this. I know the city managers talked about putting some of these, the, or the document of things that I've been requesting for consideration to put them in a future strategic plan or in the strategic plan for future discussion. So I'm not sure how we'd want to tackle this. I think I've shared with, with my fellow colleagues and the public that the city council gets the opportunity once a year to address our city budget. And that 99.5% of not even more of the budget gets adopted, right? Staff works hard to put together a budget and the recommendations pretty much go through in terms of what the fire department wants and police department wants. It goes through, but then there is that opportunity for us to try to use the budget to further a little bit more some of the community needs or things that we think are important priorities for our district or the city. So I'm not sure how we would approach this, but what I did my best was in the document that I presented to staff and the city attorney and council members was that I tried to do my best to identify where the source of funding would come from. In particular, this is my third year trying to get a line item in the city budget for the arts. And I'm really excited that Councilmember Harrell and I have been given the opportunity by the council to continue to explore that possibility. And then I was, I was very pleased to hear at the last council meeting that city manager had set aside some money in, in one of his budgets. I'm not sure what budget it is, but a budget he, he obviously has the opportunity to work with that there was some money for the arts. So in that recommendation, all I'm asking is that we create a line item in the Parks Department, Parks Division that's pretty much for the arts and that we transfer that 50,000 that's already there. And I'm not sure, I guess the question to city manager, is it the same 50,000 that Mr. Isherwood's talked about and I've talked about, or is it a different amount?
The $50,000 that's currently in the city manager's bud, budget is related to the arts. That's exactly specifically for the arts. The committee that is getting ready to start meeting, I'm assuming will start thinking about what is the approach it want to takes relative to the arts. We'll come back to council with some recommendations if council decides to fund some of those recommendations that would come out of that $50, $50,000.
So I think for me, it'd probably be another step to demonstrate to the community that it's something that we care about and that we're looking to do by creating the line item in the budget and then transferring that money into the budget. And of course, whatever work product comes out of the committee, recommendations are going to come to council. And at that point, council going to decide how they want to expend those funds, but they're already there in the line item. And so I, I'm not sure, Madam Mayor, if, if, you know, just going through each one of them. Like I said, I wrote notes to be able to demonstrate that where some of the money would come for, from. I think the other one that I wanted to highlight was the idea of creating. I talked to Donette when we did the tours from the chamber about the idea of creating a, a micro loan program. And I know I've talked to Tracy in the past about it. Create a micro loan program that would help our smallest of smallest businesses to try to get through the next, you know, paycheck, payroll, other things that would help them with the, a loan as, as small as $2,500 to be able to develop a program that would help local small businesses. You know, we've invested millions of dollars in downtown. And so I think what, what I asked for was that we develop a program with $50,000 in it that would allow us to develop this, this, this micro loan program to help small businesses. And as, as I noted in here, that the funding would come from two sources. One would come from the partial naming of the amphitheater, which is going to be an item on a future agenda council. And then second, a reduction in the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation contribution, which I understand, coincidentally or great, they'll be here tonight to talk about what they've been doing for us, which I hope is, is a good amount of things for economic development. So like I said, I tried my best to figure out where this stuff would be funded, where it would come out of. And so I'm not sure how, how you guys would like to address these items.
Can we have another round?
Yes, I haven't had mine yet, so I'm going to do mine right now. I, I am very much in favor of looking at in some way showing the public that we have a balanced budget, whether that's in timing, you know, that we, that we look at it that way. I'm also very much opposed to adding or deleting from the current allocations. I am extremely opposed to taking any major wide money for anything except the operation of the homeless shelter, which is what we told the public that was about. Also, the, the annual corridor, we were very clear on what, how that was to be handled. I mean, I remember that we were going to look at properties, we're going to decide whether those properties were to be demolished or to be refurbished. And to in some way increase the, the beautification of that area prior to the huge grant that we're going to get from Caltrans in probably 2020, what, '26, '27? Yeah, several million dollars to, to further improve the annual corridor, which is our district. So certainly the, what we're, we want to do that for sure and not take any money from that.
And, and just if I could really, that project is, the analysis continues. So staff has prepared an entire study examining the area. We had, we anticipate this year that they will be adding to that study and starting to identify properties and bring them back to council this coming year. I'm pretty sure we're not going to spend 500 this year. So I think if you wanted to reduce it from a timing perspective, that would be an eligible source. And then we would come back. And then we would come back to council in the future and say, okay, now we're ready. We need additional dollars to do the other things, just so you understand.
Yeah. So I think the timing issue is probably the most. You know, advantageous way to look at balancing the budget so that we can tell the public that we have a balanced budget. So by adding three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars worth of, um. Expenditures, um, I, I personally feel like we've had a chance. To look at these carefully. They've been, been put into the strategic plan. So that's my, that's my opinion on that. I, I really feel strongly about the timing issue. The community projects, I'm, you know, I'm open to concerns about that. Uh, the fifty thousand dollars being set aside for the arts and the baseball and softball. Um, is that for lights? Is that what we're helping them pay for? Utility bills. Um, soccer doesn't get played at night. Right?
Soccer does play at night.
It does play at night? Oh, none of my kids ever played at night, so they play at night now. Do they play on the same lighted fields or no?
No, they play at the El Buoy soccer.
Okay.
Who pays the utility?
The user group pays the utilities.
So they pay, but softball, baseball doesn't. Who built the field?
Who what?
Who built the field? No, who built the soccer complex?
Uh, city.
Yeah. Okay. So those are all things that I think we can discuss. So I, my main concern is that we, we move forward and we, um. Give some sta- staff direction on how we can present a balanced budget, uh, with no deficit, uh. So we'll go around again. I think Steve, Mr. Harold will say the same thing.
You read my mind. In my discussions with city manager, I made it very clear that I wanted a balanced budget. I was completely opposed to adding anything additional to it other than. The arts and reinstating softball and baseball that for whatever reason it was removed. In one area where the increase in our travel expenses and our discretionary funds. Our travel expenses, I would agree with that because the amount center now, I don't go to any of the conferences. Others of you do. That's enough to pay for about one. And if you get two or three that you go to a year, you're not having, so that increase I would support. The other one for our discretionary funds, no, I would not support that. We've made it, we've used it mostly to buy sleeping bags, paper challenge points and maybe a couple of other things. So I think that's fine, right where it's at. But I'm very, uh. Yeah, I want to be able to tell the public that we are giving them a balanced budget. We're providing the services that we're required to provide to them and with their best interest at heart for us.
Vice Mayor.
Love everybody's comments and I'm glad we're having this discussion and, uh, and we have some time. One of the topics that came up is with measure Y. And myself, and I think the mayor is, you, you know, Councilman Sagala's brought up measure Y, the mayor's brought up measure Y and myself. Um, I'm, I'm prepared at this meeting to talk about measure Y. In that I, I endorse, uh, the funds being used towards homeless related operations and so forth. Um, as we went through measure Y and we went through that process, um. There, there was a lot of discussions we had with them. That was tough meetings, tough decisions. Uh, the community, it is, uh, there was just a lot of debate in the community, uh, where we're going with cannabis. How we're going to address that, those, that was tough. Um, it was tough before I got on council and tough decisions. When I got on council and I think the, the consensus was. And the flag that went up the flagpole was it's to, it's really going to help towards address. The expenditures that have really fallen on us to work and mitigate homeless issues. And we wanted to build the complex and we're going to have costs with that. And I think the public, the public has completely, publics just doesn't give it the due justice. Our community and our neighbors have supported our plan from the beginning and been very patient. And been with us to say, we as a council came together, made tough decisions. And put together a strategic plan that we're going to move homeless from the street. We want to do our encampment and we're building a homeless shelter. And that has, that was a tough strategic plan and decisions and all of us faced that and worked with each other on it. To do that endeavor and then to take, I think the money in its great intent and purposes and endorse that, but to change gears with that. To where I think the public or the community and our neighbors would say. I would be concerned if you're going to take money away from police and fire, that's going to fund. Some certain dynamics. It's going to create that debate again. It would open that up. Measure Y was a great strategic plan that those funds are for that dynamic. And I, uh, but I endorse that and I endorse that it stay, to stay with that. Uh, measure I, I unders- the, the discussion with measure I. Has been on the table, I know for years and, and I touched on this with our city manager and others. It comes up, you know, and fully respect that. We need an audit. We need to break this out. So if we come back, and I think if you look at the nexus of measure, this is just. Councilman Isherwood's editorial on measure I's as it come up. If you try to come back in the element of balanced measure I or so, what, what does that mean? You know, and, and ramifications that comes back. As measure I was started and it funded police positions. To come back and perhaps. Put that up on, on a subjective block towards that component is I'm concerned about subjective conversation that has. Objective results. Does that mean then if we balance it, we're going to shift our allocations towards the police department? Or what it's funding in public safety. The. I had told Mark and I think that discussion is that our neighbors and community have asked, hey, what have we done for five, you know, a few years? The CF, our chief financial officer came in front of us and said, here's what we have in revenues. Here's what we've done for a few years. Um, and I think that answers the issue. When we go forward with it though, is. I'm careful to what we perhaps ask for or dabble in and take a subjective persona of our debate. And put it under a microscope of measure, uh, and I don't. I don't want departments to have to feel that they're going to be under the chopping block with that. The point being is I like the strategic plan method that our city manager's given to us. Some of the items I shared with Mark, I feel what being involved in the community for almost thirty years now. Um, I, I, as an old school method was the council came together, they kind of presented the list and if your item didn't make the list, it was. Hey, thanks, Councilman Isher for your input. It's not on the list this year. Next, here we go. And I kind of shared with Mark that that's kind of the, I'm still, I think, carrying that with me a little bit, that debate. Hey, council, we're going to come together and have that debate. Well, what that leads to is, and, and I'm chasing a rub and explaining it, but it brings the next point is. It leads to us having a discussion around scarcity of resources is what we're doing. What we're doing then is debating with each other of. How we're going to make a dollar out of fifteen cents, if you will, to do community stuff. I like what Mark presented is to say, you don't have to do that. Take your items, put it on the strategic plan and give staff time to evaluate kind of a platform that we can put out there. If opportunities present themselves, we come back. Um, and a council member doesn't feel like your items were kicked to the curb. And at the same time, a council member doesn't feel, you know, per se, like it's all me and, and my district, if you will. So Isherwood has needs, District Five does, but. The, the part of doing that, I, I think is a good method. That's measure Y, that's measure I. Ca- Councilman Sagala to your list. Um, in addressing this and talking this part, the two items, which I've already spoke about. The fifty thousand dollars to the city manager, keeping that there, because we had that debate already and I'm endorsed for keeping it. Seems like there's a few council members that do. Um, I have said about the softball and baseball. The, the third item and the final item, which I would be open to is to. Is the economic development micro loan program. However, to me is I get lost in the method of for which it is being proposed rather. I could endorse that this be on a strategic plan, as I said, and let the staff see what presents itself that comes up. Public partner relationship with the chamber, there are CDBG funds, um, sometimes micro loan programs, they are tough to administer. Having our staff capacity to do that, they are, they're tough. However. Um, I think I totally respect what you're saying and council sometimes has given that charge to you of saying. What do you want? And then when you say what you want, oh, well, how are you going to pay for it? And then when you come back and say, well, I'm going to pay for it this way, oh, well, let's go back to what you want. I, I respect where you're coming from with that. I more endure, I endorse that it be on a strategic plan and would be open. To something of the future of us having that loan program and how can it come about? The other items outside of those three, um, at this time, I, I don't endorse that for different, for different reasons. Um, in conclusion, as we say, and I want to come back to this, I think it was Mark who said at one time, and I thought it was a great point, as I've used it already, a scarcity of resources. There, there seems to be consensus on the, uh, balanced budget approach. And, uh, the part of letting staff work through that as for tonight and where we're at tonight. Um, the annual corridor and the reason why I touched on that one is Mark, Mark presented. Endorsed the importance that was shared and I'm absolutely right there. But the annual corridor one has a practical move that addresses actually the issue in its enormity. Um, it's, I don't see it as necessarily we're cutting something back, rather. It's a practical move that we don't have to get in debate on cutting. It's something, it's, we're, we're making an adjustment. We're making an adjustment towards that fund at this point in time, which then there could be consensus that it come back up. With the mi- annual corridor, we don't have to cut a specific item, if you will. You won't have to come in. And do that specific method. If we did that adjustment, it helps a lot in the overall game plan. Totally endorse what we want to do with the annual, but there's not a project in front of us. There isn't an absolute. We wouldn't have to make a CIP style decision or something with that. So that's, that's one. And, um, at the tune of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that address it, doesn't take away merit if there's other debate on other stuff. But that's why I presented that because I don't think we have to lose our goals. We don't have to. Feel that integrity and character was lost in the community. It's just an adjustment at this time. And then we can come back or if something presents itself at the halfway barrier, we can walk back through that. So. That's, that's my second round of points.
Seems like we have a consensus that we want a balanced budget. And, uh, I, I think by my questions right off the bat, it was clear that that's how I feel. I, I'm, I'm in line with what Mr. Harold indicated and I, I like the way he succinctly said it, which is. I think based on my profession, I don't say things as succinctly as somebody like Mr. Harold does. But, uh, the, the fact that, uh. We, we, this discretionary one hundred twenty five thousand dollars considering the deficit we have. I think, uh, uh, my recommendation would be we take that off the table. I travel, I agree with Mr. Harold that we elevate that to the five thousand. Uh, the improvement fund, we cut back to, uh, 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 its original amount of, uh, twenty five hundred. That alone, by my calculation, is a hundred thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars right there, which is over half the deficit. That we're dealing with. Um, I, I understand what. Uh, Mr. Isherwood, the vice mayor indicated as it relates to the annual corridor. But I agree with the mayor and Mr. Sagala that. Um, you know, that's a commitment that's been made as it relates to the annual corridor and the. And while from a, from a technical standpoint, timing and putting back in. There's the perception that we're treating the annual, annual corridor on the west side differently than we are downtown or other parts. Of the city. And I just think we need to find a better way to deal with that. We can get to that, that final two hundred and what was my figure? Two hundred sixty six thousand to come up with a balanced budget that we're all comfortable with. The, uh, on measure Y, um, just an observation. Uh, I, I think our current tax rate at five percent is, is something we should stick to. The number of businesses of three, I think, is a number we should stick to. And we should understand as a community and as a council, that this is a, uh, an area of business. That's in a state of flux. I noticed recently that, uh, Strathmore has had. A lot of upheaval and concern about their budget and the amount of money they're getting. From cannabis dispensaries and how it affects them overall. And I can't help but think that has something to do with other communities like ours now has ca- uh, cannabis. Dispensaries that's reduced sales in their area. It's affected their budget. And I've just seen where Visalia is putting on the, uh, the ballot. Their ability to, uh, tax up to ten percent, uh, on future cannabis sales. And I couldn't completely understand on the article, but it was almost like they wanted to be able to tax. Sales of their residents, even though it occurs outside of their jurisdiction. Josh may know that better than others, but, uh, it seemed a little far reaching, but, uh, that could affect. Uh, our, our, uh, tax rate as it relates to the businesses that we have. So I think this is an area that we have to watch. But I, so basically with the. With what I think we have a consensus on here, we have. Only about a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars to get a balanced budget. I mean, we don't have that much. That needs to be done if we do the things that, that, uh, Mr. Harold indicated. And I've talked about as well as the others. So we're real close.
If I could very quickly, just to make sure I understand, I know, uh, Councilmember Sagala is going to speak in a second, but what I heard you say. As what you believe is consensus, Councilmember Maderos was, keep the travel at five thousand for the council travel fund, keep. Reduce the council district funds back to the twenty five hundred each. Remove the hundred twenty five thousand council discretionary fund. What I didn't hear you mention, but I heard several others talk about was, were you restoring the leagues utility? The thirty thousand or some different number for the leagues and their utility bills?
No, it's not thirty, oh, thirty thousand. I thought that that in this two sixty six, six oh one, it was already put back in.
No, it was not.
Okay, then I want to put back in.
At thirty or?
It was inadvertent, right?
It was inadvertently, I don't know how it was left out, it happens. So would we be putting that back in, in your opinion, at thirty or at a different number?
Well, I'll, I'll speak.
Well, thirty and, and his seven hundred fifty. I don't care about the seven hundred fifty.
So I'll, I'll speak to that in a second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, um, I, I mean, I think this is a perfect example for the public that are, are watching this now or maybe watches in the future. On YouTube, this is a perfect example of how we legislate, you know, we're coming up with things here. I mean, obviously we. You know, once a year get to focus on this budget, but I've heard some legislative proposals or budgetary proposals that I could support. And, uh, so I've kind of written, written a list of, of summarizing exactly what Mark said that. You know, uh, we look at what, what Mr. Maderos, Mr. Harold, a number of folks agreed to, but I guess the first question I had.
Oh, one thing, just one thing, uh. The only other thing that the vice mayor indicated was, was, uh, he was discussing the micro loan. Program, I, I just think fundamentally, that isn't a program that our city. Is in a position to administer. I know the chamber has done that type of thing. In the past with federal programs and state programs where funds have been made available and that's not something that, uh, I think. I could support. I just, that's one, and that was just my position.
No, yeah, just to address that is, I mean, uh, when I talk about micro loan programs, like anything else, I mean, when we had a bunch of, uh. Utility money, right, to help poor, uh, folks, residents, low income folks to pay their utility bills, didn't we contract that out to somebody? Uh, didn't, uh, didn't we give the chamber some money plus a little bit on the side for their administrative effort to do things? So I mean, there's different ways to approach it. I'm not asking us, well, yeah. Well, but yeah, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter where the source comes from. The idea is that it can be done. So I, I just. I disagree with you on that part of it. But going back to what, what, uh, what I want to propose, the question I had for Mark and staff is what? What is our, what is in the reserves right now? How much money is in the reserves?
I, I.
Balanced fund or whatever.
I'm going to answer that really quick for Mark, only because we don't have our audit finished yet. Really, once the auditor finishes, we'll have a better sense of that. But what I will tell you is. We, we meet or exceed our twenty five percent, currently, we meet or exceed our twenty five percent general fund reserve policy. Uh, we, we don't have the exact number right now because we don't have the audit complete, but we will provide that to you when we come back at the mid-year.
When, I mean, all right, so give me a ballpark fear. What was last year's reserve fund? June thirtieth of twenty twenty?
I, I can't quote that.
I, I can't quote that number for you at this time, but I will, I will say this. I, I believe that the city manager is correct. I seem to recall a number of $26 million. However, if you, you may recall that a significant, a, a transfer was added from the general fund last year of about an additional transfer of about 8.8 million dollars, uh, to, to projects. Uh, so that definitely reduced it somewhat. And one of the other things, and it's the reason to wait for the audit is I have requested as most other agencies do is that those reserves and fund balances be separated because I'm, I'm reluctant, I'm reticent to talk about reserves as a part of, uh, when that reserve is the overall fund balance, when it should just be a component of it. Again, I do agree with the city manager. I believe we are, we will remain at or above our $25 million. Um, when we, when we see the audit results and, and even the, even the 24, I'm sorry, 25% if I'd said that incorrectly.
Would it be, uh, safe to say that the amount of money that Mr. Maderos has cut almost in half of our deficit can be covered by our reserves?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. So there is enough money to cover the 140, 150,000 dollars, correct?
Yes, correct.
So with that in mind, that's something that I would also like for us to, to be part of, of the discussion. So given the feedback and I appreciate the feedback from my fellow council members and staff on the items I presented. So I wanted to, from what I understood and heard from folks, this is kind of where I like to kind of see if there's consensus to do so. So the first one I, I've heard about, um, about the arts and the funding and the importance of it. And obviously, uh, Mr. Harold and I look forward to having the community discussions and, and, or having discussions with the community and other folks about that. So I'd like to, to, as part of what we agreed to is move that the line item, line item be created in the parks division for the arts. And that the funding that's been talked about several times be transferred there. So create a line item in Parks Division budget and put the $50,000 that we've all been talking about in there. To be, no, it's in, it's in the city manager's kind of budget somewhere, but it's, there is no dedicated line item and the money is not in it per se. So I, so I'm just seeing, kind of taking one step forward of what we've talked about, that the money's there and we just move it into a line item that it be set there and then council in a future time will decide based on the recommendations, the committee, how to expend that much. So. It doesn't, I don't, I mean, is, is your 50,000 you have aside, set aside, does that add to the deficit if it just transferred?
No, it's currently in the budget.
Yeah. So just taking it from, you know, your wife's budget to your budget, but it's dead for the household, right? So that's. But, but.
Since we're on that item, walk me, walk me through quickly, why does it have to be that way? That's where you're kind of tripping me up on where I have the money. You already have it solved.
Well, I don't, I, I don't, I don't have the money. I mean, we have the thought that the money's there, but what I'm looking at is when people look at our budgets, you know, and God, you know, bless whoever wants to read the 700 pages of budget. They're going to go through all of it, like I go through, right? Hey, we spend X amount of money on frozen meals for the seniors. We spending X amount of money on this for whatever, that someone's going to come across the parks budget, division budget and say, wow, the city of Teleri cares about the arts. They actually have a line item that's in there with some money. And that's what I'm looking for, the supporting consensus. We all, I, I, I get the consensus. We all agree. We support the arts. And there's money there. I'm just saying, let just put a line, create a line item and stick it in there and then we'll figure out how we're going to spend it in the future. So that's, that's, let me get through all of them and then we'll figure that out.
We have exactly 10 minutes to go. So going through all of the items, I, I don't know that we need to go through all of them.
Well, no, I'm going to go through the, through my, uh, consensus items that I think we can agree to. So that was.
Three that we can agree to.
So that was one of them. The second one was, as we said, to reinstate the baseball softball utilities with the additional cola, which would add $1,500.
And I think we've all agreed on that.
Okay. But there was a question about the amount. So it's the 15 plus the cola, which would get them to 15, 750. So that adds $1,500. I also would like to request that we do a cola as well to the Teleri Historical Society. That's $625. So the total amount would be 2,125 that I'm asking for to add to the budget. So that's the total that I would request out of the entire list. And then the final thing is, uh, I do understand measure Y. But what I like to do is, is, you know, to me, I'm still stuck on the principle that this is a, a tax that the community, you know, there's concerns. I mean, I, I have, like Mr. Maderos, uh, has an insight to the high school board and high school district. I have an insight to the elementary school board and the schools in our, in our community where there's a lot of things that are going on in regards to cannabis. Uh, I don't know if, if Jason has encountered that in his youth programs, but you know, Cheetos brand and is cannabis. Uh, and I, I think Chief Conklin could probably concur on this, that there are candies out there that look like cannabis. There are kids that are selling cannabis at schools and there's a lot of different types of things. So I, to me, there was a big debate about whether we should or not sell cannabis. And for me, the principle is that if we are selling cannabis, and I believe that our operators are responsive, responsive, responsible, uh, business owners, that some of that should go back to kids. And so what I'm proposing is that we stick to the 1.3 million that's been, um, projected for this year for measure Y, that any revenue above that be split 50, 50 with the homeless and youth. So in other words, if we come in at 1.5, that's another 200,000, 100,000 go to youth and 100,000 goes to the homeless. So that's one thing that I like to propose. I'll support the 1.3 million that's already dedicated. But if we have a, if the businesses have a good year and the revenues increase, that that be split 50, 50 for youth and for the homeless. So, so those are the things that, things that I like to recommend in, in regard, uh, in addition to what Mr. Harold, Mr. Maderos and everyone else has recommended.
Okay. So the, all of those, all of your listed and put onto the strategic plan. So going forward, do we want to give some specific direction that all of us can agree upon?
Well, all the, all the items, all the items he indicated, I could support as to the cost of living increase, except on the one on measure Y. How we handle measure Y, what I suggest is you submit an agenda request and we get it in front of us as part of an agenda and actually discuss in the future how we're going to deal with measure Y.
Madam Mayor, if I may interject for a moment, and, and I apologize, I'll be quick for time, a couple of quick comments.
Yeah.
Uh, first, uh, and I'm not advocating for one thing or another with respect to the contingency account. But among the other reasons, being relatively new and having a short time to work with, one of the other considerations of that was that if money were needed to be transferred for one of these other programs that we're talking about, that could, that could be done without increasing the budget further. So that's one. Two, uh, in the interest of time, you may, it sounds like there's a consensus on things. When the, um, when the, if there is still an interest in adopting the budget tonight, when that item comes up, of course, you can amend a resolution. Somebody can present what he or she wants, and then another, another council member, if, if desired, could request an amendment to that resolution. The city attorney, city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the one thing I've done a few times. Uh, so I, I think I'm right. Uh, so again, you can, you can resolve that there is a consensus, at least of those things that you're in, that you're agreed in a consensus, there's a consensus upon certain things. And you could do it as amendment to the resolution and still adopt the budget tonight if desired.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just to finish up, I didn't get to finish my last point, but I, I did also want to request that, that as the city manager has done so, everything else being, be removed, be moved to the strategic plan for future discussions. But in particular, those are the one, two, three, uh, four, four items that, uh, I wanted to, to request or can, uh, council consideration and support. Which I think half of them, they already do, but.
Well, I think three of them, all of us can agree to, and the fourth one is, is perhaps can be an agenda item at another time concerning measure Y, because I don't think there's consensus on that at all. Well, maybe there is. I mean.
I don't, I mean, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's why I said either staff put on the agenda or not. So I mean.
Yeah. So if, uh, Mark, as far as direction to the staff, is that adequate?
Yeah. So I'm just going to repeat that. I want to make sure I hear consensus from council. My goal tonight will be when we come back with the agenda item, that we will present to you what I'm saying to you today. So we'll be able to reflect the changes in the budget. That we would take the two current 266,601 dollar deficit. We would remove $25,000 from that related to council's district amounts. So they will still have 2,500 per district, not 5,000 per district. 2,500, I'm so sorry, 2,500 per district, not 5,000 per district. Thank you. We will remove the $125,000 council discretionary fund. We will add back into the budget 31,500 dollars for the baseball and, uh, softball league, right? That'll be split divided between those two. That would leave $148,000, 148,101 dollar deficit. Councilmember Madero said he would also support the cola for the historical society. I haven't heard that from anyone else. Just only two. So I need to know if that's in or not.
So I, do we need to do a roll call or just?
I just need to know general consensus. Do we have a consensus for that 625 or not?
See, uh, uh, Councilman Harold says no.
I'm not at this time.
Not at this time. So we don't have consensus.
And you're not either at this time.
There's three of you.
There's two and you're not currently for that. Okay. So that we won't include that when we come back. I will also say that of the 148,000 remainder, my recommendation at the meeting is that you either take it from the annual quarter project, because we will not spend all 500 this year. Or you take it out of general fund reserve fund balance. Those are the, the two options that I would present to you. That would be, those would be the simplest ways of doing it, rather than trying to go through the entire budget and grab, you know, 1% from each budget or anything like that. That would be too difficult to do tonight.
Okay. I think there's some consensus that we not reduce the corridor in you.
That we can fund balance is what.
Well, I think the question I had was, I know the 800,000 contingency, 500 of it that is for the annual corridor. What is the other 300,000 for? Is it, uh, for future projects, ideas, or is it some specific? Because I, I think Mark just said a few minutes ago that we could use some of that money to cover any additional cost.
Yes. As, as I said, uh, as I said earlier, um, one of the reasons was to account for those things. For, for an agency to decide, I initially I would probably recommend somewhere in the 200 to 250,000 a dollar, uh, range. But knowing again, just, just looking at accounts in the budget where there was just uncertainty, but just too many things to, to be able to, to, you know, talk to everybody and get all the answers on. I figured there'd be a few things like this that were removed. So yes, that money is there for that purpose among others. As well as during the year for efficiency purposes, to give the city manager discretion to move money around within the general fund to get things done. Um, without the delay of having to come to council first, and then of course informing you after the, you know, afterward when, when, when appropriate.
So Madam Mayor, I think, I think I would be supportive to balance the budget that we reduce that 300,000 contingency fund to 150,000. And we cover the deficit between what is saved that as Mark explained, and then as second Mark has explained, that we do the, we cut that 300,000 to 150 and the budget is balanced.
Can you clarify this during, that, that what he's talking about right now?
Mark was just.
I was distracted.
Mark was describing.
I was trying to figure out why the cola didn't take place for the historical museum and why I'm supporting the annual project in light of.
Cause you saw the light, you saw the light.
So.
Sometimes there's a little trade offs.
So Mark is recommending, he normally sees in budgets that there is a contingency fund that is built in, baked into the budget outside of let's say general fund surplus reserves. And the reason for that is throughout the year, there's always things that will come up where there's a need for dollars.
And we have that.
We have, we have $800,000. Mark was saying that we could, there's the 500,000 is Inyo, 300,000 is undetermined. He's saying we could, we could use 150 of that to balance the budget. We would still have 150 in the contingency fund.
So if that's the case.
And, and the, uh, reserves.
Yes.
Yes. An elevator repair, by the way, is a good example of something that's unanticipated that could come up during the year. They use a contingency.
And that'd be $150,000. It does.
Yeah. So that balances the budget. And so in that, in that case, I would support the cola for the historical society. Cause it's only 600 some dollars.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's three. So we'll put the cola back in because there's three to support the cola.
Yes.
And are you two gentlemen comfortable also with, uh?
Using contingency?
Yeah, I don't want to. What was described, I think the contingency to be the remaining amount for what we're talking about? Yes. And what was discussed here? Yeah.
Okay. I, I thought maybe we could, uh, reduce city attorneys.
If we did that, we may, we may take care of next year's budget at the same time.
I think he's leaving from now at 9:00 PM, no matter what. So that might help.
Okay. If, if we've come to a consensus, we are right on time uh, for closing the, uh, special session and we will begin council in five minutes at seven.
Uh, the cemetery ambit auxiliary. Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Linda Malloy. I'm the founder, along with Vicky Gordon, of the Cemeterians, and we are all Amvet's auxiliary members. We have thirteen hundred flags, which I'm sure Steve Harrell has told you all about that we put up at our cemetery. And we would like to start putting them up downtown again. We put them up last year at Veterans Day. We put up eighty four flags. Um, the problem was some of those flagpole holders are just caked with stuff. And if we could get somebody from the city to at least shovel them out, it would be a big help. Um, we would like to put them up for Fourth of July, put them up on the third, take them down on the fifth. We would like to put them up on uh the day before Veterans Day and take them down the day after Veterans Day. To encourage this city to have some patriotism again. It's been since, I believe it was nineteen eighty three since they were put up downtown. So we would just request that you consider that and let us know.
And who would we refer them to?
What specifically needs to be done?
I'm sorry, what?
What specifically needs to be done?
Um, your new flagpole holders are the the square ones, uh, not just the the old circles in the cement. They're caked, some of them uh down by Carl's Juniors were caked with mud last year. We couldn't get the mud out. The homeless have crammed a lot of stuff down in there, too, and it just needs to be pulled out. We pulled out as much trash as we could last Veterans Day, but some of it is beyond us, old ladies.
So just a quick question, are they standing poles or do they hang?
They are ten foot metal flagpoles with a three by five American flag on them.
Okay, so they get stayed in the ground.
And what we did was we encouraged a bunch of students to come and run at the crack of dawn that morning to put them up. Because we just put the flags on them and handed them to the kids. And we found eighty, like I said, eighty four. Now we've discovered we missed a whole street. So there's actually like, I think ninety four, ninety five of them. And we put them all down M's M Street. And then to Larry Avenue, we just made a big cross out of it. K Street, yeah. So, um, but we just need to get some patriotism back in to Talarri. And it's so pretty to see our cemetery with all these flags flying and hearing the wind snap them, you know, so. We'd just like to take that on as a service project and then offer it to kids as a service project towards their graduation also.
So Madam Mayor, um, if they could provide to the city clerk Melissa their primary contact information, we'll have staff reach out to them.
I have, I have it here on.
Okay, great. And we can, we can have staff investigate. I'm not familiar with this effort from the past that at all, but I'm sure we have staff that are. So we'll give staff.
Well, I moved here in eighty three and that was the last time I saw the flags up on on.
Oh, eighty three, okay. So so we may not have staff that's familiar with this. So we may have to go out and do some investigation with you.
Yeah.
Michael Miller may be able to tell us on that, right, Mike? No, no, okay.
Well, last time we just contacted John Harmon because it was a last minute thing. And he contacted the streets department so they wouldn't come and get after us at six o'clock in the morning for being out there doing something on the streets. So it took us an hour to put them up and about forty five minutes to take them down.
So they're only up for one day?
Um, we would like to leave them up for July third, fourth and fifth.
Okay, yeah.
Take them down on the morning of the fifth.
Let's just get, let's just get staff together with them. I mean, I I my gut feeling is this is something staff can help. If it's in a, if it's an extraordinary uh use of staff resources, I'll have to get back to council on that. But if it's not, if it's something we can accommodate in our sort of regular schedule of things we do, then I'm sure we'll build a provider list.
No problem. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in council that wishes to make public comment at this time? Is there anyone on the line? Oh, okay, then I will close public comment. We'll now go on to presentations. Um, Tulare County Economic Development Corporation's annual report. Erica.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm very grateful and very excited to be back here presenting to you this evening. Um, tonight's presentation uh is going to review our year end overview as well as our preliminary strategic plan for the new fiscal year twenty four twenty five. My name is Erica Diolivera. I'm the president and CEO of Tulare County E D C. I've been with the organization for three years. Uh, just hit my three year anniversary and I've been in the leadership role uh about two and a half of those years.
See if you can pull that microphone a little closer.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Okay.
Um, just brief overview of some of our core services. Um, that really includes uh attraction of commercial real estate. Um, industrial real estate and specialty businesses to our county. Uh, we continue to provide an economic forum and a place where folks can talk about economic development and what that means and how it impacts our community. And then we also promote regional attributes. So we take all of our local assets, we build proposals and we basically sell to Larry County. Um, I like to often refer to what we do on a daily basis as big fish fishing. Um, we are the only local level practitioner in the county. That means that we are the only uh five oh one C four entity. That works hand in hand in partnership with Go Biz. That's a governor's office of business and economic development. We're the only local practitioner working with our federal E D A. Um, we additionally are the only primary marketing entity for Tulare County when we're trying to recruit and do some of that big fish fishing for Tulare County. In terms of site selection and recruitment, we still maintain a twenty four seven uh industrial and commercial database platform that is embedded on our website. Um, the city of Tulare uh is able to use that platform as well, and I often refer to this platform as our uh industrial or commercial Zillow, if you will. Um, that does include our local workforce and data demographics. So when we've got big companies or analysts looking to locate or land in Tulare County. It's basically a one stop shop to find all of those answers in terms of why we are a prime location to locate. High level overview of the, some of the practitioner work that we do. Um, I do serve on two committees for S two J two. If you're not too familiar, Governor Newsom allocated five hundred million dollars to the state of California. To build out an economic development strategy for the state. We've never had this before. I serve on one committee. Um, as a regional table representative and I serve on a second committee for the Tulare Kings Catalyst Proposal Review. And so I serve in that capacity, representing both Kings and Tulare County, representing specifically economic development projects. Um, this year must be my lucky year. This year is the year that we are writing our new narrative for our five year Seds report. That document is required by our federal E D A. That is important to the city of Tulare because when you are looking for grant opportunities. To fund some of your infrastructure projects, those particular projects must be on that five year Seds report. So lucky me, I get the opportunity to build that narrative. I build all of our assets together. And I work hand in hand with Will Marshall, who is our local and a regional rep for E D A. As I mentioned, Sarah, uh, Sierra Sand working jobs, S two J two, I I mentioned those two committees that I serve on. Um, the last thing I'll mention with that particular uh task force is that we're currently in the spring sprint. We're on week six. We go to week eight and essentially we're building a strategic economic development plan for Kings and Tulare joined together. Now, some of our leads by source are really broken up into referral, direct, uh, we have a contracted vendor that we partner with. Uh, Go Biz Office, uh, California Central Valley E D C. I do serve on that board of directors. And our broker and site selectors. I'm very happy to share that seventy eight percent of our leads are E D C exclusive. That means that folks are emailing us, they're calling us, we're getting direct referrals, which is the highest percentage it's been in the last ten years. I've participated in twenty seven site selector missions, connecting one on one with site selectors that represent companies looking to land and locate in our county. And I've participated in seven legislative mid uh meetings, including one trip up to Sacramento. Overview of our employer and industry recruitment, and this is part of our G I S web tech. This is a new service that we've integrated. Um, a few years ago, we had an older platform. It needed a refresh, kind of a facelift. Um, what we've integrated and what is new is our three D spec building. The platform itself is new. We're using a different vendor. Um, all of our demographics are Esri based. That means they are the most current demographics for our area. And it also includes zoning uh layer and utility layers as well. Some of the twenty three twenty four work plan achievements when I came to you last year and we proposed not only an increase in dues. But part of dues also came with new services that we um were able to provide for this current fiscal year. Um, not only did we meet all of our financial goals for this year on the private sector, the public sector and our event financial goals. Um, but like I mentioned, a part of annual membership paid for some of these new services. Um, that includes impact reporting, our G I S software system, which the city is able to use, um, zoning layer and utilities. Um, and then increased lead uh generation and marketing uh services as well. And then part of membership also includes sponsorship for our annual economic summit. So not only did increase in dues pay for new services that the city of Tulare has never had before. Um, but your increase in dues also matched the financial commitments from other cities um across the rest of the county as well. So thank you for that very much. Um, part of generating new leads includes our digital marketing campaign. This was the first year that we've launched a a digital marketing campaign. And part of that was updating our website and doing a little bit of rebranding on what it is exactly that we're selling. Um, we did have a um consultant come out to Tulare County last fall. And we were able to maximize not only consultant services coming to Tulare County. Um, and you produce a regional tour, but he also produced the SWOT analysis, which we were able to then fold into our five year Seds report. So we really hit two birds with one stone there in terms of services and really trying to get as much bang for our buck. As I mentioned, telling the Tulare story. As I mentioned, telling the Talarri story, the new website, um, a little bit of minor rebranding, what it is that we're selling is really a different California. Our county is significantly different from the Bay Area and from, uh, Los Angeles inland empire. The city of Talarri has tremendous amount of local assets to offer. And so part of the new website is really selling that story and building out proposals. One additional service that the city of Talarri received is building out our new, uh, featured properties, uh, page on our website. You'll see on the bottom there, that's kind of a cross street between, um, Pratt and Page, which is prime industrial property here in Talarri. And what we did, um, since December is when we sent out this marketing campaign. Um, not only are we selling big picture to Larry County. But in part of our, our marketing campaign, we were able to really hone in on specific links. That our site selectors, our brokers and our companies can click on that will enable them to go directly to our featured properties. What that looks like since December is over seventy thousand impression emails. And we have over a fifteen percent open rate. That's about ten thousand five hundred participation. Um, that says a lot for only, uh, rolling this out in December when we had funding come, uh. When we had, uh, the secured funding to, to knock this out. Um, but as you can see, we're consistently sending these out and we're consistently getting participation again from site selectors, brokers. And directly from companies. So the amount of value and impressions of what Talarri is getting on the marketing side. Is part of that fifteen percent and seventy thousand impressions for the last six months is quite a bit. Overview of our, our revenue goals. Um, I'm very excited to share, we've had a fantastic financial year. Our goal for the twenty-three, twenty-four year was seventy thousand dollars, excuse me, dollars in private sector. Um, we had a gross goal of seventy thousand dollars in event revenue. Our largest event that we host annually is our economic summit and I fell just shy of that goal. Um, as you can see, but our total goal was a hundred and forty K. Um, our actuals was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. So not only was I able to. Market our one-time annual event, our economic summit. We've had over three hundred people in attendance, which was about fifty to seventy-five, uh, more guests than we had the previous year. Um, increase in sponsorships, but more specifically our private sector. Our private sector, um, participation has increased by two hundred percent in the last twenty-four months since I've been in this leadership role. And I've also secured additional funding from CRA. That is, uh, Community Reinvestment Act dollars from our banking industry with a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from Bank of the Sierra. So our total financial contribution this year. Just from private event revenue and additional funding from grants is a hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. Um, I will add that the last time private sector was anywhere near sixty thousand dollars was two thousand nine. High overview of who our public partners are. All of our cities still remain actively, um, partners and members of the EDC. And as I mentioned, that two hundred percent we've, uh, increased a lot of our, our private sector participation. And they're really stepping up to the plate and seeing a lot of value in what we bring. As I mentioned about the economic summit, it continues to be one of our most successful events. Um, I think every year Dr. Chris Thoremberg comes, he gets funnier. Um, and so if you haven't been to a summit, I highly encourage you to attend. Um, very, very well attended, well, um, received, a lot of great data. And just to give you kind of an overview of our project metrics. Now, this is specific to the city of Talarri. We divide our projects into two aspects. One is leads and the other is assists. Leads are the actual. Uh, site selectors and the companies actually looking and fishing to locate here in Talarri County. Out of those twenty-five leads we received, um, the city of, um, Talarri was applicable for thirteen of those. Um, which is a sixty-three percent response rate. Um, and it's not thirteen divided by twenty-five, it's thirteen divided by thirty. We received, um, we generated. Uh, and, excuse me, we received a total of thirty RFIs, but what that came down to was actual proposal development. So the company's wanting to actually get their hands on something tangible to really describe and. Um, identify why Talarri County is a prime location. Um, of those thirteen proposals, uh, forty-one sites were submitted on behalf of the city of Talarri. And on the assist side, um, the city was applicable for seven out of twenty of those. Some of those assists are just data. A lot of those folks are analysts that work for the site selectors and the brokers. And they're looking for the demographics, the workforce data reasons to get their client interested and then the. Following step would be to develop a proposal. So we really kind of split our total projects into those two categories. Now, our work plan priorities for the new fiscal year, I'm, um, really honing in on this is really just maintaining momentum. We've had a tremendous year, a lot of positive momentum from both our private sector partners, our public sector partners. And so part of those priorities include, um, increase in lead generation. And those are, uh, really continuing our impressions on the digital campaign side. Um, we're going to continue offering all of the new services that we integrated this new fiscal year. Um, and then increase in, uh, broker and site selector missions. Item two is increased partner participation from both our private sector and our public sector as well with lead tracking. And then really our, our big, our big ticket item really is closing the gap. We haven't been at a zero-based budget for many years and prior to me coming on board with the EDC. But the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year is really the year where we've turned the ship. We're almost there. Our, our goal is to reduce that deficit to not only a zero-based budget, but hopefully bring in some additional revenue. So we're in the positives. Um, we strive to increase that by annual, um, increases in private sector partnerships and event revenue goals. And, um, for the new fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, we won't be increasing, um, any dues for public sector. So any of the cities, so. Any of the commitments that we received from this last, uh, financial fiscal year, we won't be, uh, asking for any additional dollars there. And just to give you a kind of an eyeball of what closing the gap looks like for us. In twenty-twenty-one, um, over three hundred thousand dollars in deficit. I came on as an operations manager in the summer of twenty-one and, uh, we were at two hundred and forty-three thousand dollar deficit. And then the last two years I've been in a leadership role, I've been able to reduce that deficit by, uh, roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Um, in the last two years, each year for the last, uh, two years, give or take. Um, we're estimated to be under fifty thousand dollars deficit for this year's, this current, uh, closing fiscal year ending June thirtieth. Will actually be anywhere between the thirty and forty thousand dollars. But our current financial health, we are significantly healthier than we have been in the last five years. Uh, we have two hundred and ten thousand dollars sitting in our investment account. Our board of directors did borrow sixty thousand dollars from that investment account in Q two of twenty-three, twenty-four. We do have that funding sitting liquid cash in our operations account today. The board does plan on moving that funding back over in Q two of twenty-four, twenty-five. And the reason for that is because we do have, um. Some of our accounts payables from our cities move a little bit slower than some. And so we often have to wait for our investment checks before we can pay our vendors. And so we want to make sure that we have enough sitting in our operations account to be able to provide services in a timely manner. And, um, since I've sent this presentation, um, we had thirty-one thousand in accounts receivable.
Can I ask which cities?
We have one, we have one city that, um, is on a quarterly payment plan. Um, that delays payments, uh, which can be a challenge. But we love them. We love our partners.
You love Talarri too.
Yeah. But as of this week, um, we're down to twenty-six thousand in accounts receivables. So overall, big picture is that we've had a tremendously positive financial year, meeting our goals in private sector and. Getting past not just meeting our goals, but, um, bringing in additional funding from, uh, grant opportunities. And we plan to really maintain that moment momentum and just continue to move forward. And I'll take questions if you have any.
Well, I want to thank you for, uh, being here this evening and sharing the good news. I really appreciate your, the work that you've done and how you've turned this organization around to be so. Forward-thinking and, and really out in, uh, in the, the whole United States advocating for Talarri County. So I really appreciate that. Does anyone have questions?
Just compliment you on what you've, you're doing, your, your, your presentation at the governor's advisor forum. The breakfast with DeeDee Myers was, I really enjoyed and those who attend, I think those who attended did. Also, that was a plus for, uh, the city of Talarri to have that actually take place at the Heritage Complex. And, uh, just seeing how those from the governor's office reacted to you. Was a tribute, I think, to what you're doing and how you're turning things around. So, uh, on behalf of, uh, the city of Talarri, if I may, we want to thank you for what you're doing and.
Thank you.
Um, I know, uh, our city manager says nothing but high, high regards as it relates to your job, at least to me, I've heard that. And I think Tracy feels the same way. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That really was a high point having.
I was looking forward to your presentation.
Yeah, you know, I think that's kind of a, an unsung accomplishment. You know, it did happen so late in our fiscal year. Um, but having, um, Secretary Stuart Knox and Director DeeDee Myers, she's a director, if you're not familiar, uh, DeeDee Myers. Um, is a director for the governor. She's, she's a senior advisor for Governor Newsom. But also serves as the director for business and economic development. So of, they've never been to Talarri County before. They've always driven through. And so to host that hearing in the city of Talarri at the Agri Center. Um, was not only a big success, but they had nothing but wonderful things to say about Talarri.
And she was the press secretary for the President of the United States in the nineties. And in the, uh, television series West Wing.
Yes.
Um, the press secretary was patterned after her. So, uh, there was quite a background as related to.
That's cool. Mark, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just, so I just want to remind you of a couple of things. Again, kudos, uh, to Erica and the board for turning the organization around financially. You know, it's, it's an important organization for us from my perspective. Because every day they're out marketing the region, the, the county, we'll call it, and all the cities in it to the world. And that's very important because they're out fishing and they're fishing for big fish. And those big fish, those big companies want to know about the county. They don't necessarily want to know just about the city of Talarri. They wanted, because when they come in and they're going to bring two thousand jobs, they need to know that. They have the utilities, they have the traffic, the transportation systems, they have the employee workforce base. So they're looking at the entire county and it's very important because. If we had to market ourselves, just ourselves, we couldn't use our taxpayer dollars to market, you know. Uh, to market Exeter, right, for example. So there's a great efficiency when we do that through the TCEDC. For us to just market the city of Talarri alone and have the same depth and breadth, breadth that they have, I mean, it would cost us well over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Instead, we spend forty thousand dollars and we partner with all the other organizations. We tell a much more compelling story to these big, to this big fish. So. Uh, you know, great job turning the organization around, a lot of work ahead. You know, our goal with them is that they're out fishing and they're bringing us leads. Uh, you know, we don't need a, a thousand leads. Just takes one or two great leads, great companies, and all of a sudden we've changed the face of the community, but you gotta be patient with that effort. You have to be consistent and diligent at doing it. But we don't have the resources or staff time to do it. We have to, when they bring us the fish, we have to reel them in. That's what our job is. And so thank you. And I just want to make sure council is aware of that distinction between the functions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any, does anybody else have anything? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members.
We'll now move on to the Talarri Chamber of Commerce's annual report presented by Donnette Silva Carter.
Good evening, Mayor Sayer and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to. Give you an update, although I feel like I'm here a lot of times, either virtually or in person. So you, this may be a little repetitive. I do want to make mention of one item because I hope that we will all keep the Curdie family, the Hall family. And our thoughts and prayers with the loss of their dairy barn, um, overnight. That is truly, you know, a tragic situation for them. Um, we know that thirty-five hundred cattle had to be moved, all those cows. And that is where, you know, it's unfortunate during tragedy that we are reminded. That we are community throughout Talarri County. There were haulers coming in. They worked all throughout the night. There were young kids helping. Those haulers. And so that just speaks volumes for what community is like here in Talarri County. And, um, the Curtis and the Halls have been big supporters throughout our region. So not just in the. Community that they're in. So anyway, just positive thoughts and prayers as they, um, regroup and as all those cattle get milked. Thank you to all the dairymen who made space too and the haulers. I wanted to also make note, brought you the latest, um, Making the Connection. And also, um, the map again, as I mentioned, people still like their hands on maps and, um. We have the next Making the Connection will be focused on agriculture and that'll be coming out right around August the first. So. And it was, um, great to hear from Erica. I have the pleasure of serving with Mark on that board of directors and. We've seen some amazing work out of that organization. And I too, on behalf of the chamber and myself personally, want to thank council for your investment, um, for the leadership that Mark has shown. With helping, um, the organization as we've regrouped. We are on such a great continued positive path now. Okay, so our annual reports. We, um, have our leadership with our organization that are very committed to delivering on the promise. Of our four core competencies for our organization, which is creating that strong local economy. Promoting the community, representing the interests of business before government and providing those engagement opportunities. So these were adopted quite a while ago. We might have strayed for a little bit. We came back to them about eight years ago. And really have put a focus point on these being the core drivers of what the organization is all about as it serves our Talarri area. With all of the services, you see us offering business and community, uh, a resource center. So we are about making sure that we have all that business counseling, the business promotion that is available. Uh, the access to capital, making sure that we are working directly with our local businesses, small and large, but we know primarily. Uh, we are servicing, uh, the smaller businesses, those that are the startups and we're looking forward to where the future brings us with regard to that goal. We also work alongside the city in business attraction, in business retention and in business expansion. And when you take a look at, um, the national statistics, you will find that actually more jobs are created by small businesses. Than our large businesses. As Mark said, if we get one or two leads, we know that's good, just to have the opportunity to compete for that type of business. We promote, uh, our community and most important, we promote our businesses. We are here to serve the community. We want to see that tax revenue come in. We want to see the jobs that are created. And sustained here in the Talarri area. We still are a visitor information center. We help with the relocation. I know whenever we talk about the digital age, sometimes people think, why do people still go and visit a chamber? Why do they call and stuff? Because they know that's, we are the information source and some days I wish you could, um, wear our shoes because we get some of the oddest questions and people think we are everything. And I always, uh, tell my staff, you know what, they call us. So it's better than them not calling us to ask, you know, I mean, we get stuff like. Who is the author for something or my relative lived here? How do I find information? They may be passed away. So. We are happy to direct them to the appropriate resource. So it, some days are just even more fun than others with our calls. We of course create those community connections that are really integral to the success of our local businesses. And also those within some of the other initiatives that we have for workforce development, economic development. The growth of our youth and creation of opportunities and also just making sure that the community is working as a whole. We have adult and youth leadership development. I'm gonna, I'll go through my other slides a little quicker, but anyway, we of course have leadership to Larry. Which is in its umpteenth year. We just graduated a great group of new leaders. And starting next week, we have our information sessions that will be held. So I want to publicly announce that. You can find all that information on our Facebook page and in our e-blast. So looking forward to that. At the same time that we're recruiting. looking forward to that. At the same time that we're recruiting for Leadership Tulare, we are also recruiting for our youth ambassadors for business. Since Shawna is here, I would like to give a personal shout out from the chamber because Valley Strong Credit Union came on strong with this program and they continue to support what we're doing with our youth development. We have our nonprofit event promotion. So our nonprofits do rely on the chamber quite a bit to help them to get the word out for their events. We even have our We Are Tulare page that we started so that there are other avenues that even if someone's not a member, and they should be, but we wanted to make sure that we at least provided a social media platform to celebrate what's happening in Tulare and to help all of our nonprofits in the community. Of course, we have our choosetulare.com site and we have our Chamber of Commerce site. How does the chamber impact business and community? Some of the things I already just talked about. The networking, the surveying that goes out on a regular basis to our local chambers and our, and regionally to a lot of chambers and businesses. That's most important. It goes out to businesses, both members and not. Show us that networking is still an opportunity that businesses want in their community. I always refer to it as doing business by grandfather's way. That handshake is still valid for a lot of our businesses. We know that that was, I want to say really probably showed us the relevance of it during COVID when people could not meet and couldn't shake hands. We had businesses telling us how they suffered. So we're glad and never want that again. Thank you. Credibility. We have a great chamber that is well respected in our region and all the way, you know, to Sacramento and beyond. And businesses feel like they, when they are members, they are a part of that credibility. And their reputation is amplified when they're a member of the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. Education, of course, our workforce development, professional development for youth and adults. Our advocacy, which of course we're super proud of, the efforts that we have made in Sacramento and DC. And then the marketing, making sure we create that visibility and exposure for our community and our businesses. We are also what is termed to be a three C chamber. And that is a chamber that is a catalyst for business growth. We are a convener of leaders and influencers, bringing people together collaboratively to make sure there's change where needed or to strengthen initiatives that are already happening within the community. And then we are definitely the champion for that thriving community. This is just a snapshot of the last year of our 140 years as we stepped into 140. We really are the oldest chamber around in this region, which is pretty cool. So we're excited about that. So just to give you kind of an overview, a lot of ribbon cuttings, grand openings, ground breakings, networking events that we did, over 50 in-person or virtual events, and most of those are in-person. 95% of those are in-person events. Kind of shows you an overview of all of the different kinds of initiatives that we have and all, you know, staying within our mission that has existed for quite some time. We are partners in economic development. We partner with all of these entities, probably missed a few there somewhere too. We too are involved with the California Jobs Initiative and on the committees that Erica already reviewed. So glad to have an opportunity to make sure that we are at the table representing Tulare. We connect to attract business and to our ready workforce that we have. And we don't just think small locally here. I mean, we think on a global basis. We are partners, of course, with US Trade and Commerce. And when we bring people in, now that we are managing the International Business Center, we have created that as more of an economic hub. It's not just a spot to come in and get a great drink, by the way, from Valley Coffee, because they have a great barista, but put your feet up, that type of thing. But we create energy in the room. There's meeting space that's available. We have staff and the other teams, we've brought in all of these partners in order for them to have access to everyone as well and to create that economic hub. We have the choosetulare.com site. That site is going in the next six months will be actually not completely redone, but it will be redone for probably the most part. Getting a big refresher to that. And on this site, you have ready access to an extensive amount of information. You can do online business plans if somebody doesn't want to, you know, be together with a business counselor. We talk about businesses existing here, those types of things. And also access to sites and buildings available. I think with all of us doing that, I don't see it as repetitive. I see it as people are definitely going to see what's available in our region and they're going to want to locate. So we are also good stewards of our community. And so we are not just involved with the specific chamber business as usual, business initiatives, but we think that in order to really represent the community of Tulare and its businesses, we have to think about the people and the different efforts we can join in. You know, like the 9/11 blood drive that we're a partner in, like our Tulare County Fair that the chamber started many, many years ago. So a lot of different efforts that speak to community. And so the chamber spends time getting engaged in those initiatives as well for a stronger community. Of course, we're always promoting shop local. We do that year round, but I always show up during the holiday season because that's the biggest shopping season of the year. So we continue to do that. We know that the market analysts report that every dollar spent locally circulates at least five times in the community. You go and spend your dollars out of town, they may not be coming back. For the most part, they aren't coming back. So we want to get people encouraged to think of Tulare first when they go shopping. We are your representative on the Sequoia Tourism Council. I have the opportunity to serve as the co-chair on that council. So we're very active in promoting tourism initiatives, making sure that our community is well represented in the Sequoia Visitor Guide. This year, we hosted the Concierge College. We brought in staff from restaurants and hotels within the region so that they could learn more about what happens within this region of Tulare County. So that when we have a visitor that goes in and has dinner someplace, they're hearing this story. What else is there to do in Tulare? Where else can I go? What can I see? That type of thing. So we are sending our staff also to the tourism, travel and trade shows that happen in the Bay Area and in the LA area. And that's always an exciting opportunity to directly connect with people that are interested in going out and doing travel. So we want them to think of Tulare County first. You know, we have the Sequoia's most recognizable item, by the way, according to all the research that's been done for Tulare County. And so we have the opportunity to promote, what else are you going to do? You know, you're going to see the trees, but what else can you do in our various different communities? And of course, at the end of the day, we're thinking, how else can you spend your money in these communities? Because, you know, that's what it's about, keeping the economy going, but giving people a really good customer experience when they travel here. Back to the governmental affairs and advocacy. We definitely are the voice of Tulare. We step it up in various different directions. You know, when we are looking at SR 99, which I was just on something for that today. I mean, we want to make sure that we are reaching out and beyond just the businesses here when we're looking for that support. We, the city manager challenges can, you know, how can we collaborate? How can we go out and reach out? We expanded that reach because we started looking at, hey, people are traveling the 99 all the way through. They're going through Tulare. But we wanted to reach out and go to our colleagues in the north, our colleagues in the south. We want to see that expansion. We want to make sure that page gets reconfigured. So what can we do in order to reach out to all kinds of businesses and organizations, municipalities that are fully down that 99 with the most greatest impact where people are going through in our area? Of course, we want to share that we did receive our award again for the Cal Chamber. And there were only 12 chambers in the state of California that received the top president's award. And unfortunately, my knee issue prevented me from going, but as you can see, Tiffany is smiling big. And she and Cassidy had a great time. So we have such an awesome team. I cannot say enough about that. And of course, we connect with our legislators all of the time, locally, statewide, and also on the federal level. We will soon be announcing a special community roundtable that'll be happening next month with our federal representatives. So we're excited about that as well to bring them to the table to hear more about our area. And promoting, engaging, growing, educating, celebrating. Okay. Everybody loves the parties. Everybody loves the celebrations. Our community of Tulare is on the go more today than I have ever seen it. You know, for 17 years I was a neighbor, in a neighboring community. And I am so excited that all of this excitement is now because I get to be a part of it with our Chamber of Commerce and all of you that get to do this and drive it. And we have a great city manager driving this, great economic development staff, and every department head, every member of the team within the city. So celebrations are really important because I think we remind people of how great it is to choose to live, work, play and worship here in our community of Tulare. So this is just a snapshot. I didn't think I had enough screen time to get everything in, but just to kind of show you some of the other celebrations that we had. And we promote also, we do several television shows throughout the year too, based on events and activities to get the information out about our community. We are very vested in building the future leaders and future employees within our community and work very closely with all of our school districts here and even a few that are beyond, that are, that have some of our students going to those schools as well. So this year we had a great programming of our Be High School Ready, Be Future Ready, Be College Ready, Be Life Ready, because you're getting out the door now. So what does life look like this next year for you? And we of course have our youth ambassadors for business. Had our biggest class yet with 23 youth ambassadors for business. And as you can see Shawna down in the corner. So they also do financial literacy. So they have a full curriculum, some of which mimics what we do with Leadership Tulare. And I do want to thank city staff who have teamed with us to do presentations and give tours. We of course, Leadership Tulare, developing those leaders of the future. And as we look to the future, I guess I should say beware because Jimmy's coming to town in November. So that doesn't mean think of your excuses now. That means think of your yeses when you get an ask for that. So we're looking at continuing to grow the chamber. And we're most excited about growing micro enterprise in our community with the Tulare Business Innovation Zone. And just, you know, keeping our community moving. We have a lot of community impact partners. These are the entities that step up their game at a whole new level of investment to be community and business champions. And we greatly appreciate all that they do for the community and for the chamber. And we just are very grateful to always have this opportunity continuing to be partners with the city of Tulare for economic development, growth and community development in Tulare. Questions?
Thank you so much. I'm just looking at all these pictures and having fun. Are there any questions or comments from anyone on council?
Thank you, Donette. As always, you do a great job for the community and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I call her the CEO on steroids. Really enjoy working with you. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on our agenda to communications. Do we have any communications this evening?
No communication.
Okay, then we'll go into council reports and items of interest. Councilman Harrell?
Well, the 12th had the opportunity to take the tour of what, five of our projects, I believe. It was very interesting, especially to see Zumal and the old courthouse, how that has been changed over, over time. At the completion of the tour, everything for the day, I was probably about six pounds heavier when I got home with all the dirt and dust that we had to walk through to see everything, but it was well worth it. Then on the 15th, attended the Juneteenth celebration in Live Oak Park. And that was well attended more than last year. And they were very appreciative of our proclamation and our attendance there.
Thank you for doing that. Vice Mayor?
Ditto the tour and ditto the Juneteenth. And I don't, we have a mayor in the wing over here. I mean, Steve did a great job in the presentation with the group. So it was, it was a good time.
Appreciate you both being there. So on the 5th, 6th and 7th of June, Mycoguanas Club cooked pancakes for the high school graduates and that was really fun to do. Went to the Power of the Purse on the 7th and one of our police officers who was showing off the purses, I won it. So I got to get a purse from one of our police officers. Also attended the GAC meeting. The field trip was, was amazing. We really, I felt like I was back in school again, going on a field trip. It was fun. Then attended the Miss California Pageant the week of this, of the 11th through the 15th. We had two Tulare young ladies participating in that. They did us proud. I met with the Parks and Rec on their Monday meetings for the encampment, which is really, I just enjoy that a lot and get to see what's going on. So things are going well. Want to commend Jason and Brian for the work that they do at the camp. And it's not appreciated enough because it's, it's not a normal job for a Parks and Rec department to do. Really appreciate all of that. So that's my report.
I also went on the tour, was somewhat busy. Over the course of the last two weeks, I became, my, my wife and I became grandparents again.
Congratulations.
Number three, which we, it was our surprise baby. Andrew David Simos, and we're very proud of the new baby. I'll pass it on to you, Mark.
Also want to thank all the staff for that, that tour. It was great to see the, the projects as Donette talked about how Tulare is on the move and you know, I was very impressed with all the work. Look forward to the business incubator opening up. And the other thing that I wanted to request, my fellow council members is the ability to adjourn in the memory of one of our local students who unfortunately passed away last week. So we wanted to at least bring that up. So at the end of the meeting, like to be able to adjourn in memory of a young lady named Bree Scott.
That's a tragedy. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Did you have a request that you wanted to make now or after the consent?
After the consent.
Okay. So all the matters listed into the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted in one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, let's, that item may be removed and considered separately. Are there any consent calendar items that anyone wants to have? Hold. Oh my gosh.
Seeing none.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt items 10.1 through 10.6.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is amazing. It's the first time that's happened.
You have to say it passed.
What?
It passed.
Yes, it passed. They wrote a five to zero. Okay, so we will move on to, now you want to make a request.
Yeah, I would make a request and request the council give consensus to moving general business ahead of a public hearing because we do have some people here on the general business items.
Okay, so general business, we'll move on to that.
We're going to do general business first.
So general business?
Yes.
Yeah. 12.1 is the Library Board Appointments. And I believe that the two people that are going to be reappointed are here in the council chamber tonight. So we'd like to reappoint to the Library Board Peggy Demuth and Antonio Rodriguez for another three-year term. And we just appreciate, Peggy, you've been on this Library Board for a very long time. And Anthony, this will be your second term, right? Yeah. And we just appreciate your expertise. You are a foundation in education and the importance of reading. So we appreciate you. And, and the recommended action is to appoint two members of the Library Board to serve a three-year term ending on June the 30th.
I'll make a motion to adopt the, the appointment of the mayor of Mr. Rodriguez and Mrs. Demuth.
Well, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Pass this five to zero. Thank you so much. Now you can go home. Unless you just want to stay in here all the rest of the stuff that's going on. Did you want to continue with the rest of the general business?
I think so.
Okay, so we'll move on to 12.2. Zumal Park Amphitheater Naming Rights Term Sheets. And that will be Mark Mondell.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Very exciting for me and I think for the organization this evening to be bringing to you the proposed Zumal Park Amphitheater. to be bringing to you the proposed Zumwalt Park Amphitheater Naming Rights Term Sheet. Um, as you'll recall, the city has made a big commitment to renovate Zumwalt Park and build an amphitheater and splash pad and playground. And a central component of the amphitheater will be a concert series. And we will bring in, uh, performers from all around the country. Um, and so as you'll recall, there are several ways in which the city will generate revenue from the, uh, use of the amphitheater. We have a contract with an operator called Spade Entertainment. And the city will receive all the parking reboot revenue. If there's any route parking revenue related to events, uh, we will receive, um, a portion of ticket sales revenue. The city will receive, um, 20% of sponsorships. So as Spade Entertainment sells, let's say, for example, they were to sell a, a VIP area to a business who wants to do advertising. Uh, a business can certainly come in and, and purchase tickets, uh, just for shows, either for individual shows or for the whole year. Um, they could also sponsor, uh, let's say the concert series or have their businesses advertised. So that would be a sponsorship. The city would receive 20% of whatever sponsorship revenues they received. Um, and a, another means through which the city would receive revenue is through naming rights. And the city has the exclusive right for naming rights. And we're very pleased this evening to be bringing forward to you a proposed term sheet with Adventist Health, who would be our naming rights part, partner. Um, it's, it's very exciting, I think, for us because Adventist Health, you have to realize and understand the magnitude of that organization. It is a leading organization in the healthcare industry. They're located in California, Hawaii and Oregon, to my knowledge. Multi-billion dollar budget, um, very important non-for-profit agency who does a lot of good in many, many communities. In particular, they've done a lot of good in this community. As you know, they've taken over the hospital. They are working hard to invest in the hospital. They're looking at the possibility of future expansion into the tower. And so when we started approaching businesses with the possibility of naming rights, they were the first one that came to staff's mind. They've made such a big investment in our community and in our minds, to be able to associate our name, the city of Tulare with their name is a huge win for us. And we hope and believe it's a win for them. This evening we have Jason Wells, who is the president of the Central Valley Network of Adventist Health. I'll invite him up in a minute. Um, this is a nine, non-binding term sheet. So these are just business terms that we're presenting to you for your consideration. Obviously we're strongly recommending your approval. If you were to approve the term sheet tonight, the next step is it would go to the city attorney's office and they'll start developing the contract that would then work directly with the Venice Health's attorneys. And once we finalize that contract, it would come back to you for, you know, your final approval. Couple of things I want to point out to you in the term sheet, and you've got most of the major terms listed there. Just a few of the highlights. This is a proposed to be a five-year agreement. Uh, under this agreement, Adventist Health would pay the city a hundred thousand dollars a year. The city would use that revenue largely to be able to meet the terms and conditions of the term sheet, which are, for example, we will have two permanent signs at the facility, one overhanging the stage. And you would see that in exhibit B in your document. Um, and also we have a free standing sign. You remember on the tour we went on last week, behind the building, we pointed out the, the column that's under construction back there, right off of Tulare Avenue. That sign would be perpendicular to Tulare, Tulare Avenue and has a electronic message board or digital display board to advertise events. So all the people that are driving by or walking by will see that. The Venice Health's name would be on both of those signs. As well as they would be part of all the advertising that's occurring. One of the things I want to bring to your attention, it's not really for your consideration tonight, but when we bring back, assuming you approve this, when we bring back the agreement, we'd also bring back a proposed amendment to the Spade Entertainment Agreement. Because many of the things that are conditions in this contract would ultimately be provided and satisfied by Spade Entertainment. And so we'll get into that when we bring that back and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. There's a number of other variables in the contract, things like related to the potential to include Adventist on a city's wayfinding program. As you know, we're currently going through the logo process. We'll be bringing that back to you here, hopefully in the next month or two. Um, once council adopts a logo for the city, the next thing I'm going to bring to you back after that is a proposal to start working on a wayfinding program. And I'll bring to you also the way in which we would intend to fund that program. Um, in, in short, the answer is we, we're working with a billboard company to build two billboards, one on the north side of Highway 99 and one on the south. They would be able to advertise regularly for events as well as we can advertise our concert series. Adventist would be part of that. Um, and then that revenue we would use to fund the way fund, wayfinding program. So if we created signs throughout the city, more like directional signs, this way for parking, this way to the Adventist Health Amphitheater, their name would be on those signs. And so there's a lot of parts and pieces in here. We're going to have, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. But I first wanted to introduce Jason to you. If you wouldn't mind, Jason, coming up and just introducing yourself to council, share some thoughts about where you're at in the organization, what's going on and your thoughts on this agreement.
Thank you, Mark. Honored to be with you tonight. Um, Jason Wells, President of Central California Network for Adventist Health. As you know, we operate eight hospitals between south of Fresno and, and Bakersfield. And so two hospitals in Bakersfield, the only hospital in the town of Delano, only hospital here in Tulare, only hospital in Tehachapi, only hospital in Reedley and Selma and Hanford. And so, um, honored to be here. We have 128 clinics between Fresno and Bakersfield as well. As far as California City Taft, all the way up to Oakhurst, north of Fresno. This is the geographic center when we think about the Central California Network for Adventist Health. And so it makes a lot of sense for us to do this partnership. It's, it's an honor to be, um, the opportunity, um, with your permission to, to be a part of the naming of this. Um, we see an opportunity. We have 7,500 team members, a part of Adventist Health. And we can't quite get them all there, but we've got to run our hospitals when we do events. And so we wouldn't leave patients alone, um, but we could do significant events of thousands of our team members at this site. And it would be honored to rent this from the city and to be a part of that and, and an annual gathering and things like that for, for Adventist Health. Kind of a team building event. And, and so we're excited about that opportunity. Um, deeply committed to the city of Tulare. I know we're only five years in on this partnership, but, but it's something that will be decades and, and centuries. We, we love the partnership. We love the relationship. Uh, Mark and I have become friends and excited about where we're headed. Uh, we have re, um, kind of relooked at how we're approaching, um, the communities in which we serve. And there is a tremendous opportunity as we continue to partner, um, with Tulare. And this is just step one, I believe of many, um, opportunities. We are proud of, of the care that we provide. We're eager to see the tower completed. It will provide 24 more, um, beds for, for emergency department. It will be the nicest ED in Tulare County by far. Um, we think that will be significant for this town as some people are choosing to go other places for their emergency department care. Um, the second floor will be, um, six ORs as far as two procedure rooms. I just left Visalia Medical Clinic, um, in a, for a two-hour meeting there. And I have four surgeons begging for space, um, in Tulare because they're impacted where they're doing surgery today. And they want to have, um, place to do that they are not impacted. And so we will be bringing more and more surgeons into town as opposed to, um, people leaving town to provide that care. Um, economic development wise, I believe there's plenty of potential to double the size of the team at Adventist Health Tulare as that tower is completed and that is more families, more jobs, more physicians moving in. We know that for great economic development, you need great healthcare, you need great schools, you need great city government. Um, and that drives business and economic growth. So we want to be a big part of that, um, in growing the city of Tulare. So thank you for consideration for this. It's a, it's a half a million dollar commitment, um, but it's something we're committed to and would love to see it not just five years, but something in perpetuity.
That ends our presentation, council. Both of us are available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions? Oh, I forgot that this is a public thing. So I need you to read them. So comments related to general business items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of 30 minutes per item unless otherwise extended by council. For those at which you provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call 559-366-1849. Please note that there will be approximately a 20-second delay in broadcast for viewers when calling in. Mute the device used for viewing the meeting. Is there anyone in council though, I mean, in the chambers that would like to, uh, make a public comment concerning this item? Nope. Donette Silver Carter.
Donette Silver Carter with the Tulare Chamber of Commerce. And we are very much in favor, um, the support that Adventist has provided to our community and the region is beyond incredible. And so we just want to speak in favor of looking at the terms, bringing it back. And, you know, I just give them all kinds of kudos for everything they have done and to step up to do this as well is a great partnership.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on the phone? All right. Now, if there anything council, I'll close public comment. And if there are anything council would like to ask questions?
I, I don't want, want to ask. Well, I do have one question. I, I was, it was a little vague. I take it by the term sheet that, uh, the annual fee will be paid in advance. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would be a hundred thousand a year total. The commitment from Adventist Health would be half a million over the five years, a hundred thousand a year. Correct?
Yeah, but I, it's not at the end of the.
No, no, no. We would pay a hundred thousand every single year.
That is correct. They'll pay a hundred thousand dollars. Like for example, the first hundred thousand would be due upon execution of the agreement.
Yes.
But we still have to have our attorneys work through all the exact language. So there's plenty of room for attorneys to bicker about language. We'll see how that goes.
That, that's the problem with me. I'm an attorney. So I was looking at it and I was, anyway. But that, uh, the, the comment I want to make is, and this is for anybody who's watching out there in, in, wherever they're watching, this is just another example of what Adventist has been doing in this community since it's taken over the hospital. The investment in this community from a financial standpoint, as you know, has been immense. The commitment, people have questioned at times that, you know, is Adventist really committed? Can't, are they going to go forward with the hospital? The amount of money in the hospital, the amount of money in the clinics, the commitments to the community, the commitment to Visalia Medical Clinic and a half a million dollars into this, uh, amphitheater. You're here to stay from my standpoint. I don't think there's any question about that. And, and to have this type of partnership between our city and, and Adventist itself is great for both sides. I mean, uh, the, 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 we're going to have this amphitheater that hopefully will be known not only in California, but will be known throughout the country. And Adventist's name, it's going to be tied to it at Zumwalt Park in the city of Tulare. So it's, it's going to be renowned, hopefully, when this thing gets to that point. And we're really looking forward to, uh, how this goes forward and what it has to offer. And I want to thank you and your organization for being willing to do that. I want to thank city staff and Mark for putting this agreement together. Um, uh, it's good for both sides. That's a win-win situation and thank you.
You bet. Well, Councilmember Maderos, thank you for the generous comments. We will be deeply committed, not just in name, but in service as well. So imagine, um, part of the terms you'll see to provide healthcare coverage for events there. And so, you know, we don't want that an ambulance has to, you know, run, run across the street. We want to be right there, you know, so you can imagine we will be donating an AED to have things on site. So if somebody goes into cardiac arrest, we can respond and we'll be right there, um, as partners through every event.
I think it depends upon what act is playing as to whether that occurs, but.
Exactly. Well said. Well said.
Anyone else?
Um, I also wanted to thank you for, uh, the partnership. Uh, look forward to, to the things that you'll do. I read, I read some of the term sheet in terms of that particular, uh, partnership in terms of medical, uh, having folks there and all that. Um, and, but the question I had, not necessarily with Adventism, I'm very glad and be very supportive of, of the relationship. But I did talk to Mark about, uh, just sort of understanding the, the role of Spade Entertainment in terms of this agreement. If you guys, uh, on the term sheet, section D, uh, one through A through M, there's a lot of, um, things that were discussed with Adventist Health in terms of obviously sponsorship and what you get for your sponsors.
Sure.
Right? Um, and so, uh, but the question I had was not necessarily regarding Adventist Health was just sort of, there is going to be a cost. I asked, when I did talk to Mark about the agenda, um, I'd like to request that staff come back at some point and say, well, you know, providing A through M as part of the, the sponsorship is going to cost X amount of dollars, right? I mean, uh, this and that. And, and, and so I just wanted to get an idea so that we have a true understanding that the hundred thousand dollar sponsorship at the end of the day may only be 80, may only be 70 because A through M is going to cost 5,000, 10,000, whatever that number is. And that's something that'll be discussed with Spade, not Adventist. And, and you know, you guys have, you guys worked out the deal and great, I support it. But there is, I just wanted to bring the attention that that hundred thousand at the end of the day may not, will not be. Just a matter of what is worked out with Spade Entertainment. And I understand that comes at a future meeting?
Yes.
Our intention is when we bring back the agreement with Adventist, we'd also bring the amendment with Spade. So you'll have both in front of you at the same time. We also have a very detailed budget that will show what we anticipate the cost of maintenance to be and how we intend to use these dollars. So hopefully all of your questions will be answered at the same time.
Thank you very much.
And some of, some of the costs that you mentioned, I think are going to be offset by some of what Adventist has indicated they're going to be donated as a, uh, entity that's going to.
No, I know. Yeah, I understand that, but.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
As a result of this analysis that'll come back to us, all those answers will, we'll, we'll get all those answers at that time.
Okay, gentlemen, did you have a vice mayor or councilman Harrell, any questions or comments? Okay, let's go.
Make the motion, vice mayor. Counsel, I make the motion to approve the Zumwalt Park Amphitheater Naming Rights Term Sheet with Adventist Health Tulare and authorize the city attorney to prepare the agreement.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Pass this five to zero. We look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Congratulations to us as well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, now move on to, uh, 12.3.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Um, capital improvement project Ian 0103 will construct a roundabout at the intersection of Tulare Avenue and Morrison Street. Project's a joint venture between the city, Caltrans and Woodside Homes, the developer of the Farrar Estate subdivision located northwest of the intersection. The roundabout will address level of service issues at the intersection and was identified through the environmental review process of the Farrar Estate subdivision. Improvements to the intersection are included in the city's development impact fee program and are eligible for partial funding through the state's state highway diff category. In their review of the proposed intersection improvements, Caltrans identified a roundabout as their preferred alternative solution over a standard signalized intersection. To assist with the higher costs associated with the roundabout, Caltrans is providing 1.25 million dollars of funding for the project. Woodside Homes will be responsible for costs above and beyond the city's development impact fee funding and Caltrans contribution. So the city developed the project plans and specifications with significant input from Caltrans. The construction contract was put out to bid and three bids were received. JL Plank Incorporated, doing business as SinCal Construction, was identified as the lowest responsive bidder. In addition to the actual construction contract, it's necessary to supplement city staff with various consultant services from the city's list of on-call consultants. The following contracts are recommended for award. The first of course is to JL Plank Incorporated, doing business as SinCal Construction. As previously mentioned, three bids were received, um, to our request for bids. Um, they ranged from 1,588,824 dollars up to 1,735,575 dollars and 20 cents. Review of the bids determined that JL Plank, doing business as SinCal Construction of Bakersfield, California, submitted the lowest bid that was responsive to the requirements and instructions in the bid documents in the amount of 1,588,824 dollars. SinCal Construction possesses the necessary current and active general engineering contractor's licenses issued by the state of California and submitted a list of licensed and experienced subcontractors. Due to the volume of project citywide, both public and private, the city does not have sufficient in-house staff capacity to perform the construction inspection improvements. CCME of Fresno, California is included on the list of pre-qualified on-call construction management, resident engineer and inspection consultants and has demonstrated in their proposal to the city that they have the skills. and has demonstrated in their proposal to the city that they have the skills, expertise and resources available to meet our needs and the timeframe to complete the work on this project. C C M E reviewed the scope of the project and has proposed to perform construction inspection services on a time and materials basis not to exceed four hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred dollars in accordance with the provisions of their on-call contract. During construction of the project, it will also be necessary to perform materials testing to ensure compliance with contract specifications and city and Caltrans standards. Material testing services are outside the city's capabilities. C T L Crizan of Exeter, California is included on the list of pre-qualified on-call geotechnical materials testing consultants. And they have demonstrated in their proposal that they have the skills, expertise and resources available to meet the city's needs and timeframe for this project. C T L Crizan has reviewed the scope of the project and has proposed perform the necessary services on a time and materials basis not to exceed six thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars in accordance with the provisions of their on-call contract. There's also the need during construction for construction staking. We received a proposal from Guida Geospatial Solutions, who is on our list of on-call consultant service, service providers for surveying. They provided a proposal on a time and materials basis not to exceed twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Finally, labor compliance. This project's subject to prevailing wage requirements to ensure that proper wages are paid and accounted for in accordance with the ever-changing requirements under state and federal law. It's necessary to perform labor compliance monitoring of contractors and consultants. We have a labor, we have labor consultants of California, of Hanford, California, on our list of pre-qualified on-call consultants. They reviewed the project and proposed perform the necessary services on a time and materials basis not to exceed twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So finally, it is recommended that city council award and authorize the city manager to sign contracts related to the construction of capital improvement project number Ian Zero One O Three. Authorize the city manager or his designated to approve contract change orders in the amount not to exceed 10% of each contract amount and approve the revised project sheet that was provided with your staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? I'll open this for public comment. Are there any comments from anyone in the council chambers? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. And if anyone on council has questions or concerns or?
Yes, I had some questions about just the general development, I mean, the development in general. I know that when this came to us, there was a commitment from the developer that, you know, they would address the intersection of Morrison and Tulare, right? There was a lot of concern and at that point, the, the goal was to install the street signals. And that the commitment was that the developer was not going to occupy any homes. They might build them, but no one was going to live there until that was completed. Then the wrench was thrown in the process that, hey, we now would like a roundabout, right? And then dealing with Caltrans and, you know, I appreciate Caltrans, but their bureaucracy is like molasses, right? It's going to take forever. So now we're at the, well, then the developer came back to us and said, well, hey, I'm, can I, you know, sell these homes? And I drove by the other day and there's a lot of folks living there. And so the question I have for you, Michael, is I think we set a set amount of houses that can be occupied. And so are they close to that? Or are they looking to exceed it? Because I know they're building them in phases, but where are we on that?
Yes, that is correct. And they are rapidly approaching the maximum number of homes that can be occupied per that agreement. As you recall, initially, they did a traffic impact study that looked at the development as a whole, all four phases. They didn't break it down into, it's a four-phase project. They didn't analyze each individual phase. They just initially did a study that assumed everything all at once. And under that scenario, that's when it triggered the need for the intersection improvements at Tulare and Morrison. After the fact, they went back and they did a more focused study where they looked at the phasing and specifically the number of homes that could be constructed without causing the level of service at the intersection at Tulare and Morrison Street to drop below the standard set in our general plan, which is level service D. Subject to there being no traffic directed onto Morrison Street. So the scenario was that they would only access the subdivision from the existing roadway connection to the west, which ties into more, or Tulare Avenue at Hazelton Street. And they wouldn't have any other connections other than that. And that's how they arrived at the figure, I believe it was a hundred and seventy homes that could be occupied without surpass, going past that level of service D requirement.
So is that, is that what they connect? That was ninety-nine, but it's a hundred and seventy?
Hundred and seven is what my recollection is, yes.
And so they're getting there.
They're getting close.
And so then if they get there, what would be the next step? So would they be not allowed to sell any more homes or occupy any homes until the roundabout is built?
That is correct, yes.
And so any requests, they'd have to come to council?
Yes.
And is that why you hesitated there for a second, Michael?
Yeah, I was, I was trying to recall the exact language as to whether we had in any way committed to, once they did their part and the roundabout was under construction, if they were allowed to issue additional permits. I don't believe that's the case, though.
Well, let me add this, though, Michael. I don't mean to have too much of a dialogue up here on this, but that's, you described as it exists today. My understanding is we will be bringing back to council at some point in the future, an agreement between the city and the developer with regards to their payment for the roundabout. I'm assuming at that point, the developer is going to want to have the issue regarding the remainder of their permits addressed. We're not here to decide that today. And we need to have more dialogue about that internally because there's more variables. So I don't want to play that out of council necessarily, but just so council understands, I don't think if, if they come back with the expectation, hey, we write you a check, you get all the cash, we want to build our homes. I don't think that's an unrealistic expectation to have. We just got to make sure ultimately the roundabout gets finished. But we're going to, we'll need to talk through that a little bit.
That's correct. If there's any modifications to that requirement, it would be addressed in that development agreement, which would be subject to council's review and approval.
Right. And, and like I said, I'm not here to negotiate. I just wanted to ask some questions because when I did talk to Mark, these were some of the questions I let him know that I would bring, bring it up in council. Because I think for me, the other concern has been the, the traffic off of Hazelton and Tulare. I mean, that's, it's, you know, it looks uncompleted. I don't think the utilities have been undergrounded yet or, you know, so that's another big part of that project that needs to happen. And so I'm just hoping that, what I don't want to be in a situation is that, you know, and again, it's up to council, should be up to council, whether we release more homes or not until all that stuff's completed. And so that, that was just a question. And then the, the final comment is that I think, just given where we're at now, just technically, would this, this if it's approved by council tonight, then it would switch over to a twenty-four, twenty-five budget, not twenty-three, twenty-four, correct? Because it's listed under twenty-three, twenty-four. We're almost done with the fiscal year. So we'll just jump over to next year?
That's correct.
And then, okay, and then the funding is all in place. So no, no general fund, just this is state highway, Caltrans and the developer?
That's correct. It's strictly Caltrans, city development impact fee program dollars and developer.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to author, award and authorize the city manager to sign contracts related to the construction of the C I P project number Ian Zero One Zero Three, as indicated in the staff report.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, passes five to zero.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask a question, Michael, you may have already said this and I apologize if I didn't hear, but did we co-cover the construction schedule, the timeline, what we thought that would be for this project?
It was not covered, but it is in the project specifications of one hundred and eighty working days.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll tell my son-in-law.
A hundred and, a hundred and eighty working days from us providing them a notice to proceed or from tonight?
From the notice to proceed.
Has there been any property acquisition at this point for the roundabout?
No property acquisition is actually required.
Oh.
That's good. All right, we will move now to public hearing. So I'll open the public hearing. Comments related to public hearing items are limited to three minutes per speaker for a maximum of thirty minutes per item, unless otherwise extended by council. For those that wish to provide public comment while viewing the meeting online, you may call five five nine three six six one eight four nine. Please note that there will be approximately a twenty-second delay in broadcast for viewers. When calling in, mute the device used for viewing the meeting. Eleven point one will be addressed by Mark Roberts. That Mark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There's, there's no presentation, but I'm happy to entertain questions.
Okay. Are there any comments from the, anyone in council chambers? If not, I did already, yeah, so I can close it. All right. Any questions or concerns up here?
This is, this is a matter that was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago and it's come back now. And as a result, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming the report and recommendation of the Tulare Downtown Association Board of Directors and levy assessments for the Tulare Downtown Parking and Business Improvement Area Annual Assessment for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to eleven point two, fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget adoption. Mark has already given his.
Yes, Mark gave his presentation, counsel, at the special work session. He wasn't intending to walk you through that again, but he was intending to pull up a slide and go over what was the outcome of that discussion in terms of our recommendation for adopting the budget. We also will, if you are ready to, to take that action, we also need to go back over the strategic plan really quickly, but let's deal with the budget first. Mark, are you prepared to present that?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's at the end. Yeah, okay. But so, as staff understood them and they were articulated, the, these are the changes that were requested. When we, when we did the math of everything, we discovered we needed an additional fifteen thousand. So we did, from the contingency spending appropriation. So we did take the liberty of adding that. Hopefully, council is agreeable. As you can see at the bottom, once all the changes are made, the, there would be a slight surplus of thirty-seven or thirty-eight hundred dollars.
When did you do this?
Right after the, right after the workshop ended.
I commend you on that.
Thank you. I had help. It was a team effort.
Yeah, I could tell.
She used her left hand, I used my right. Amazing coordination. Wait two years, play chopsticks.
All right, so at this point, do we need to look at this strategic plan as well?
Yeah, the, well.
We'll deal with this first.
Okay, the only thing is I wanted to figure out where we would put or place the, also the recommendation that the balance of the items that I had recommended be put in the strategic plan. Would it be here or be at the strategic plan?
No, it would be in the strategic plan section under your item, which will come next.
Because I just wanted to, to make sure that, that we put those in future discussions. But.
Okay.
So we get to say upon adoption that we have a surplus approved budget. Is that right, Mark?
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else on the agenda. What was the question?
We now are in a position to where we can say we have a surplus budget upon adoption.
That is correct, yes. And I would ask that when you, when, when a motion is made, that you specify that you're, I mean, you don't have to specify them, just say that with the changes proposed by staff.
Recommended action.
Per, per recommended action.
Yes.
Right. And then so just to be clear, so the, the transfer of the fifty thousand contingency spending appropriations to newly created community arts account. And then, but is it zero or supposed to be fifty thousand?
That's the net. It says transfer the appropriations. So there's fifty going from one to another. It's within the same fund. So the net is zero.
But the, but this would create the line item.
Correct, yes.
Right.
Yeah, that's why it got put newly created, to be created, because I probably should have said.
Public hearing.
Yes. And the, Ms. O'Neil, the Human Resources Director, does have a comment on the position control budget resolution before it's adopted.
Yes, good evening, council. Page one hundred of your agenda packet or page six of the proposed salary schedule, there has been a revision since the staff report was published. And that is to include the previously approved salary increases for non-management and management fire positions that's to be affected the first full pay period of July. The revised page has been provided to you reflecting those increases. And staff is requesting that you adopt the resolution with this proposed revision.
And just a last question, Mark. In terms of, oh, sorry.
I was just going to add on to that very quickly, just for, to be perfectly clear, those monies are included in the budget. The changes that you, you see, we just didn't incorporate it over to the, to the PCB. And that's why this, this change needs to be made. So, no budget change.
Item for public comment, is there anyone in the chamber that wants to make a comment? Public hearing, anyone who wants to? Nobody wants to? So close it. All right.
So the question I had was, what, what, what is the final balance of that contingency fund, the three hundred thousand? So is it the one sixty-five, I mean, three hundred minus one sixty-five?
Correct, that portion of it, yes. So it would be two, one fifteen.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One thirty.
That was one sixty-five. I'm sorry, yes, one thirty-five.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other comments?
Just sorry, everybody knows, I think we spent about two hours worth of comments.
Yeah, I think so. Can we have a motion?
If you request, unless somebody else wants to make the motion, I'll go ahead.
Thank you.
Mr. Harrell has given me that permission, so I'll do that. I'll make a motion. Which item are we on? Can see, we're.
Top of page seven.
Twelve point, eleven point two. I'll make, make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the city of Tulare's fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budget as amended based on the rec, the, the submitted recommendation. Was there anything else I needed to say, Sean? Or did I say it?
Just based on staff's recommended changes?
Yeah, based on staff's recommendation. Also, also adopt a res, separate on the resolutions or all at once?
Yeah.
Also adopt a resolution approving and adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five position control budget and fixing the rate of compensation in regular, of regular full-time and part-time employees, council members and seasonal temporary employees as amended, if, if so amended, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-five as has been amended under the circumstances and adopt the updated strategic plan that's been submitted by council.
We're, we're going to separate.
The strategic plan, separate, they say we didn't.
Everything but the strategic.
Okay, good. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes five to zero. We'll now entertain the strategic plan.
Yes, thank you, council. The only thing that has changed in the strategic plan from when it was presented at the last meeting is Vice Mayor Isherwood sent me a list of items that he would like included under his sheet, which I've added all of his items. And then we added Councilmember Segala's list that he provided as at the last meeting. But that list is not necessarily consistent fully with the list he provided at this meeting. So I'm assuming he would like to replace the list that's included on page twenty-five of the strategic plan. Well, it's really page seventy-seven of your agenda packet with his new list, I'm assuming.
Yes, minus what was adopted today.
Yes.
That's right, bullet points, yeah, that one.
Okay, so we wait for Patrick to get back.
And, and, yeah, I guess at that point, I would make the, the motion would be to adopt the strategic plan, right?
Yes, as amended.
As amended.
A second?
A second.
A second.
We'll just wait for Patrick to do the vote. Okay, so moving second then, that we accept the, uh, strategic, what's it called? Plan. The strategic plan is, uh, indicated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Wow.
That concludes general business.
The record also included Mr. Isherwood's items that, that list.
Yes, amended. Yes.
Yes, amended, yep.
All of your ideas were in, were included, so it increased the, the strategic plan.
Yeah, yeah. So we will move on to the agenda to future agenda items. None were submitted and we'll go with staff updates. We'll start with Tracy.
Yeah. You threw me off there, Mayor. Um, thank you, um, for adopting the budget tonight and, uh, listening. I was, um, the economic development partners that we do have are amazing partners and I couldn't do without them. So thank you.
Thank you. Mario?
Nothing, I, thank you.
Shauna?
Nothing tonight.
Chief on?
Uh, we have eleven days of triple-digit temperatures coming up all the way through the Fourth of July week. Uh, our cooling center will be activated for a number of those days uh, for our citizens here in Tulare. Um, and our legal fireworks task force will be hitting it hard during Fourth of July. Uh, we've already been very successful with the help of the police officer, uh, the TPD and other law enforcement officers in our region. And, uh, we've acquired about nine hundred pounds of illegal fireworks over the past couple of days and issued out thirty thousand dollars in fines to three, or ten thou- ten thousand dollar fines to three individuals. So we're already off to the races.
Excuse me. Chief England?
Something to report.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update on summer recreation programs. The aquatics, uh, season has started at Tulare Western Pool. We've got swim lessons running in public swim. Summer day camp is running at the Recreation Center. It's filled. Um, youth enrichment classes are filled. Adult enrichment classes are filled. Um, adult sports, uh, softball and volleyball. Uh, in, in softball, we have thirty six teams. That's the most teams we've had in several years. And, uh, volleyball will be starting in a couple of weeks. So we're excited. Summer's rolling. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Benecord?
Nothing to report.
No, he does. Explain to everybody, you went to a wedding, your uncle.
Yes, my uncle, um, who's been a long, long time bachelor, as you well know, um, got married this weekend at a beautiful ceremony there in a Pomo and a Royal Grandy. So it was a very nice weekend. And of course, Councilman Maderis, a longtime friend of my uncle's, was there and it was a, a great event to be a part of.
If you have to wait till you're seventy-three years old to make that decision to finally take the plunge, and he, he made a beautiful choice and it was a beautiful ceremony. So isn't that something?
Yeah, that is.
Thank you for filling us in.
Yeah. Michael?
I just thank you for your thoughtful consideration of the budget and adoption and, uh, same for the, uh, action on the Tulare Morrison Roundabout. One more project to get going and, uh, looking forward to it.
Awesome. Melanie? Mark?
Uh, I would like to also thank you for the Morrison Roundabout. I live in that community. My wife will not leave that, uh, through that intersection. She will go to Alpine Avenue and make a right and, and go the long way.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, unless you'd like an encore presentation of the budget, um, that's all I have.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. We'll, we'll, uh, we'll skip that. Josh?
Very quickly, uh, Mayor and Council, every once in a while, you'll, you'll see different city staff that, that attend these meetings. Uh, you'll see different IT staff. You'll see different police department staff that come in. And, and today you had the opportunity to at least get a couple of words from one of the brightest minds in our city. And it's always nice to acknowledge when, when our managers and, and staff come in and, uh, you know, are able to participate in these proceedings and just wanted to make you all know that Andrew does a fantastic job and it's really nice to have you here tonight.
Mario?
No, nothing, I'm here.
Just thanks again for the budget adoption, strategic plan adoption, and your participation in the tour. Think it was great to have you guys out there and see projects underway and a lot more to come. Thank you.
And, uh, just in closing, thank you for the study session earlier. I really appreciate us getting a chance to talk and walk through things, but Mark, um, as well, thank you for your leadership of walking through some key issues. Uh, thank you, I think, for keeping us organized and it, and it's really a benefit to the city that we have a unified council, city staff, issues that we work through. And I just don't want that to also, um, just be missed. But appreciate, we, there's a lot of opinions up here and appreciate you walking through that, that we had a five oh vote. We worked through the issues and knocked that out tonight. So thanks to you and your team.
Do we get to tour the roundabout? Do we get to tour the roundabout? Absolutely.
All right, it looks like, uh, we have a closed session. So Mario, could you tell us about that?
Yes, Mayor, just one item. It's conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six. The agency representatives are the city manager, myself, uh, Josh McDonald, Sean O'Neil, and the unrepresented, uh, group is the department head group.
All right, so we will adjourn to close, uh, session and be back momentarily.
There's nothing to report. Meeting adjourned.
All right, there's nothing to report. We will have a moment of silence before we adjourn the meeting for the young lady from Western High School.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Bree Scott.
Yeah, yes. So just wanted to adjourn in memory of a young lady, uh, Tillery Western senior who just graduated. Her name is Bree Scott, who unfortunately passed away last week, but was someone that a lot of folks looked up to. She was a cap- a cheer captain, captain of cheer. She was ASB president and she was getting ready to go to Cal State Fullerton. So on behalf of the city council, the city of Tillery just like to request a moment of silence in honor of Bree Scott. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.